Call the July 19th, 2022 regular city commission meeting to order. Joyce, if we can make sure that the audio is on for the public who is not here tonight, the online audio, I'm getting texts that they're not able to hear at this point. Hopefully, maybe it just got turned on. Thank you. I hope you felt welcomed when you came in this evening by our Economic Development Director, Brian Roddamer, and our Fire Chief, David King. They served as our greeters this evening. I'm going to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. To my right, your left, is our Recording Secretary, Taylor Lockard. Taylor, give them a wave. Thank you. And a smile. Our City Clerk, Susan Daughters. City Commissioner, for a little bit longer, from Zone 1, Dwight Selby. City Commissioner, also for a little bit longer, from Zone 2, Troy Kent. To my left and your right are Deputy Mayor and Zone 3 Commissioner, Susan Persis. And then Commissioner, for a little bit longer, Rob Littleton, from Zone 4. Our City Manager, Joyce Shanahan. Assistant City Manager, Claire Whitley. City Attorney, Randy Hayes. And then way over there, you've already met Dave King, our Fire Chief, for a little bit longer, and Police Chief Jesse Godfrey, hopefully for more than just a little bit longer. For those of you listening online tonight, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. And we will start the meeting, as we always do, by asking you to silence your cell phones. Doesn't happen very often, but once in a while, a cellphone will go off and that person has to buy everybody pizza, which is fine, but it gets expensive, so please silence your cell phones. And we'll have the invocation tonight, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Invocation given by Pastor Neil Ganzell Jr. from Coquina Presbyterian Church. If you'd please rise.
Fresh from the news tonight, Mr. Mayor, I'm guided by this in my prayer, by my reading. Paul's advice to a young preacher in the first century, he says, "First of all, then I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. This is good, and it is pleasing in the sight of God, our Savior." Father, we thank you for this gathering of men and women who govern us as a result of our votes, placing each one of them there in their office. We thank you for the staff that serves the city in putting, not simply this meeting together, but just hours and hours and hours that go into making sure a beautiful city like Ormond Beach remains a place peaceful and beautiful, a place where we all love living. We ask for wisdom for this meeting, Father, that you would give the citizens wisdom. Father, that all together, we would participate in something tonight that this passage would lead us to believe you find great pleasure in, as part of what makes a city great. We pray for the police and the fire folks. We ask you for their protection. They were all out here tonight, gathered in front of the building. We are thankful for them and for all that they do in this community to keep this a safe place for our families, for our individuals and our businesses, and for the people that pick up our trash and take care of the water and all the things that city governance does for our good. We give you thanks. Bless us now, Father, in this meeting with great wisdom, and we'll be careful to praise you and thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Agenda item 4A. And Susan, if you would, please read 4A by title.
Resolution number 2022-79, a resolution adopting proposed millage rates for the 2022-2023 fiscal year, establishing the date, time, and place for the first public hearing on the proposed millage rates and the tentative budget, directing communication, expressing legislative intent, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2022-79, read by title only.
Thank you. And let's see, I think we needed a motion at this point. There's some statutory language that I'm required to read, but it's based on the proposed millage rate. And either way, it's going to be a tax increase. We talked about this at the workshop. There's no way around that. Oddly, it's not as much of a tax increase as our residents on the Budget Advisory Board recommended to us. So that's a curious governmental position to be in. Talk about cross-controlled, but that's where we're at. So no matter what the rate is, it's going to be a tax increase this year, not as much as our Budget Advisory Board recommended that we adopt. So we're not taking their advice, but let's go ahead and have the motion.
Mayor, I'd like to propose a tentative operating millage rate of 3.7610 mils.
I'll second that, Mayor. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Excuse me, can we get a resolution to approve the resolution as presented? And then you can make any amendments to that, as you may wish. If that's what you would like. Now, the resolution as presented has the 3.8640 mils. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve that, and then we can amend that with Commissioner Selby's motion.
So moved.
Second. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Mayor, for the record, did we get a second to Commissioner Selby's? Commissioner Kent, second. Thank you. Yep. That was 3.8640 mils.
So we want to, now we want to amend that.
No, no. So you got a little ahead of us here. So what you want to do is to make a motion to rescind the action that you just took, right?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. And then call a vote on that, please.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. So motion to approve the resolution as presented in the staff report. We'll get a second for that. And then, once you have the motion and second, then you can make a motion to amend it, the millage at that point. Okay?
Before the vote.
Correct, yes.
So I'll move the proposer, I'll remove the ordinance as presented.
But before you do that, Commissioner Selby, let me just try to get some clarification. The staff report had 3.8640 mils in it. Now, I have a sheet that I was handed that was prepared after the workshop, where there were three votes for sure to go to the lower millage. That's, I guess, an amendment to the staff report?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. So ordinarily, to get a measure on the floor for discussion purposes, you make a motion and a second to approve the item as presented, whether it's a resolution or an ordinance. And at that point, if somebody wishes to make a motion to amend the contents of the resolution or the ordinance, then you can do so. So you would vote on the motion to amend, and then you would come back and vote on the underlying measure.
But if the amended staff report has the new millage rate in it, then why would we have to amend anything at that point?
There's no amended staff report.
Okay. You just said there was, now you're saying there wasn't. So that's the confusion I'm trying to clear up. Nobody's in trouble. I just want to make sure we know what we're doing in the proper order.
What I provided to you is just the amended, the amended language that you'll have to read based upon the action that was taken.
In the workshop.
Right, so that we're good when this is all done.
Okay. So if we're approving the staff report, that's 3.8640 mils.
Correct.
And that's what I said at first. You didn't seem to agree with that, Randy, so I want to make sure we're on the same page.
Right. I didn't see why Kelly could provide it to you. I just wanted to make sure that the motion, that the resolution as presented originally, presumably right, is what was on the floor. Was it on the floor?
It was, it was on the floor. I think the clarification after that was that the amendment to that wasn't.
The amendment to that was unclear.
And before that amendment can be voted on, I need you, Mayor, to read the language.
Correct.
And it's complex statutorily, but, I mean, you're forcing the commissioners who aren't voting for the higher tax rate to vote for the higher tax rate first and then amend it. That's the, that's the problem.
Well, no, they're not voting for the higher tax rate. They're just voting to put the resolution on the floor for discussion purposes. That's, that's all we're doing. You're not voting on that. So...
So with that understanding, Commissioner, that you're not voting for any particular rate at this point, you're just voting to put it on the floor, I think you can feel more comfortable.
For discussion purposes only.
Discussion only.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, Randy, I want to make sure that I'm on the same page here now. So if Commissioner Selby makes his motion again for what's before us, before there's a vote, there will be an amendment to that? Is that correct?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay. I'm clear on it, Mayor.
Anyone else have any questions? And I'm looking at the staff report. It does have 3.8640 in it, signed by Kelly Joyce and Claire. And the resolution also that's attached to that has the 3.8640 in it. And that's the City Manager Memorandum dated July 19th, 2022.
Do we have the motion on the floor?
No, because I stopped you before you made it. I would rather see a motion that we're adopting the staff report without any proposed or tentative rate in it. And then there'd be a motion to insert the rate, I think would be appropriate.
Mayor, I think we have, I think we make a motion and it gets seconded for discussion. And then, which is to bring up the 3.864.
Okay.
Okay. And then we amend the 3.864 to 3.761, and then we vote on that. Or we vote on the amendment first, and then we vote on the underlying amended resolution.
So you moved resolution number 2022-79 in 4A, is what you're...
So moved.
And I'll second.
Okay. And so...
Now for discussion.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah. Mayor, I'd like to make, I'd like to amend the motion that's on the floor by adjusting the rate or reducing the rate from 3.864 mils to 3.7610 mils.
And I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, just briefly.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes. And the reason why I'm going to support that is technically it is, it is a tax increase. Yes, it is a lower tax increase than what our Budget Advisory Board gave us. But after much discussion next door, this tax rate that we're giving, compared to what we were going to give, the millage to 3.8 that we were talking about, now the 3.7, the average homeowner in Ormond Beach, the average, instead of receiving 12, a $12 increase, approximately a dollar a month, will receive approximately a $6 increase, so 50 cents a month. Just personally, I'll tell you, I know that everybody's feeling the pinch, and anywhere that government can help save a few bucks, I think it's the right decision. So that's my two cents on this.
And the reason I support this is we have a policy of having reserves of 15% of our operating budget. The proposed budget that was recommended by staff and recommended by the Budget Advisory Board had reserves at 16, a little over 16%. So the difference is about $465,000. And I think that if our, if our policy is 15% of reserves, we don't need 16 and change. We need 15. And that $465,000 should stay in the bank accounts of the taxpayers, not in the bank account of the city. And so that's why I proposed this 3.7610 rate, which is not a huge savings for the average taxpayer, but in the light of the current economy, every dollar matters. And so that's why I proposed it, and I think that's why the majority of the commission will support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just for the record, I believe that would result in a tax reduction to the property owner of $6, not half of that. Kelly, can you clarify?
That is correct, yes. Instead of a $12 increase, it would be a $6 decrease.
That's bigger than what we talked about over there, or bigger than I, whatever you told me about. Perfect.
Good deal.
Thanks for that clarification.
But still a tax increase. Commissioner Littleton?
I'm very happy that this government is not taking every penny we can from the taxpayer. There's a lot of hard-working families and seniors living on fixed income who are struggling right now. And though this government's dealing with inflationary pressures as everyone else, we still are looking out for the taxpayer.
Anyone else? Thank you. Deputy Mayor Persis?
Yeah, I just want to thank the Advisory Board for all the hard work they did, putting, you know, researching everything. I think what they presented to us and what Kelly, what you've done for us has been spectacular. I don't know how you did it. I was perfectly fine with what the city and what the Board presented to us. I know it's going to pass, but I do have concerns about going down that far to 15% in case we have hurricanes, et cetera. Just wanted to throw that in.
As we head into election season, we also head into hurricane season and turbulent potential times ahead, so thank you. Any other questions for Kelly? All right. Thank you.
I'm standing here, Mayor, only because I want to make sure you read the language.
I will read it word for word, believe me, relatively quickly. So we had the motion, was there a second?
There was.
Commissioner Selby's. Who was that?
That was me.
Commissioner Kent seconded. Any further discussion?
This is on the motion to amend.
Correct. On the motion to amend. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Nervously, yes.
Me, too.
And let's hope we don't have any hurricanes. And I was curious that our Budget Advisory Board recommended a higher rate, but that happens, so. All right. Per Florida statute, I'm required to state that the tentative millage rate for the city of Ormond Beach necessary to fund the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget is 3.7610 mils. This rate is 5.68% above the rollback rate of 3.5587 mils. The tentative debt service millage rates are 0.005 mils for the 2003 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund and 0.08 mils for the 2010 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund. This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wished to speak or ask questions prior to adoption of the tentative millage rate? I don't have any cards, Susan.
No cards.
Anyone else in the public wish to speak during this public hearing? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion and second. Well, we've already done that. Correct, Randy?
Correct.
To adopt the tentative millage rate. So the tentative operating millage of 3.7610 mils is 5.6% above the rollback millage rate. The resolution also includes adoption of the tentative debt service millage rates at 0.005 for the 2003 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund and 0.08 for the 2010 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And the tentative operating millage rate is set at 3.7610 mils, which is 5.68% above the rollback millage rate of 3.5587 mils. Now, if David King will come forward. Chief, I should have said Chief David King. How are you, sir?
Good, sir.
If you haven't had the pleasure of meeting David King, I hope you do get to meet him at some point. He's an amazing person. He is a fireperson's fireman. And as our chief, he's done an amazing job, even though it's been just a short period. I think it's awesome that he got to cap out his career as the Fire Chief at the city of Ormond Beach. And I'm going to present him with this proclamation as he prepares to retire. Whereas David King has protected the city of Ormond Beach and provided exceptional service to our city and residents for the past 23 years. And whereas David moved to Ormond Beach in 1996, he earned his Associate of Applied Science degree in emergency medical services from Daytona State Community College in 2008 and a Bachelor of Arts degree in organizational management from Warner University in 2014. And whereas David, a veteran of the United States Army Honor Guard, has a long history of public safety service, including deputy sheriff and volunteer firefighter in Glades County, service with evac ambulance service, and as a volunteer firefighter with Volusia County. And whereas David has been with the city of Ormond Beach since 1999, serving as battalion commander for the last 14 years, and appointed interim Fire Chief in January 2022. During his tenure, David received many accolades. He's described as selfless and awarded firefighter of the year in 2002 and paramedic of the year in 2011 by the Florida Fire Chiefs Association. David provides support and care for others beyond fire safety, such as building a cottage for a disabled veteran as part of the Wounded Warriors Program. And whereas David is an active volunteer pilot with the Civil Air Patrol, also known as CAP, where he educates and trains the youth of our community right here in Ormond Beach at the Ormond Beach Airport. He is a fully qualified aircrew member and transport mission pilot, and David employs all his flight skills in service to our nation as an officer in the CAP. He's served that unit in a variety of roles, including disaster preparedness officer and emergency services officer. David has been recognized for excellence by the CAP with the Crisis Service Award and the Homeland Security Ribbon, among many others. And whereas David postponed his retirement to assist in providing leadership for the Fire Department until a new chief could be recruited. Now that a new Fire Chief has been named, David is finally able to retire on July 31st, 2022, and we're going to miss him. During his retirement, he will pursue advanced flight training to further his aviation skills and abilities. As a result of all that, now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim July 20th, 2022, as a day to recognize Chief David King in the city of Ormond Beach. Congratulations. He is an incredible public servant. The fact that he would stay on an additional seven months just to help the city that he loves and that he's served, I think, says volumes, so well-deserved. Next up is Lieutenant Michelle Willis. First fire, now police. Lieutenant, I'll have you hold on. This is cool. You did, you did a cool thing, and I'm a little jealous. I would love to go to that school. Just to tell you, when I was a prosecutor, I could have gone, but I can't do that anymore. But you, some of your supervisors have done this, and they proudly contribute to serve the city. It's an amazing opportunity, and the fact that you did it is just, it's awesome. So whereas Michelle Willis was born in Daytona Beach and raised in New Smyrna Beach, Florida. Michelle graduated from Florida State University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice after serving four years in the United States Army as a radio repair specialist. And whereas Michelle began her career with the Ormond Beach Police Department in 2002 as a community service officer and began her law enforcement career in 2003 as a patrol officer. Whereas Michelle has served as community outreach officer, DARE instructor, accreditation manager, criminal investigations unit corporal, evidence unit liaison, patrol sergeant, record supervisor, administrative sergeant, and FTO field training officer, and promoted to lieutenant on July 3rd, 2021, and currently serves as a watch commander. And whereas Michelle has completed the 282nd session of the FBI National Academy, which is recognized globally among government leaders, law enforcement agencies, and our community as the premier provider of law enforcement expertise, training, and education. Whereas the academy is the chosen resource on law enforcement issues and the standards by which law enforcement agencies measure their performance. This prestigious 10-week course serves to improve the administration of justice in police departments and agencies in the United States and abroad, and raises law enforcement standards, knowledge, and cooperation worldwide. Let me get this straight, so the audience knows. You spent 10 weeks in Washington, DC, Quantico, Virginia, close, living at the quarters where you did all the training, correct? Okay. As a result of all that, now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim July 19th, 2022, as a day to recognize Lieutenant Michelle Willis in the city of Ormond Beach. Urge all residents to join with me in commending her for the accomplishments and service to our city. Congratulations. all the board members from the Halifax Humane Society, I'm going to let Nancy Lohman and Mel Stack introduce these folks for us. And I think one of our police canines was coming up. I wasn't sure which one made it.
Oh, no.
Was it Rex? Awesome. All right. This is going to be fun. It'll be fun. I'm going to let Nancy Lohman introduce everybody, and then... I'm going to let Nancy Lohman introduce everybody and then we'll present the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Partington. Yes, it's my pleasure to introduce the president of the Halifax Humane Society, Mel Stack. He's been our president for 23 years. And it's also my pleasure and honor to introduce a board member of the Halifax Humane Society for 15 years, Bonda Sullivan and her husband Greg Sullivan. And these are two rescues from the Halifax Humane Society, Garbo and Ginger. And I'm Nancy Lohman and I also serve on the board.
Thank you Nancy. And Bonda, I'll ask you to hold the proclamation. And we also have K-9 Rex and Officer Labrie. Whereas more than 6 million pets end up homeless every year in the United States, and there are dozens and dozens of pets awaiting homes on any given day within the community. And whereas we applaud and celebrate the Halifax Humane Society, who has been protecting animals since 1937, whom which the city has partnered with to provide animal welfare services since 2012. Whereas we deeply appreciate our local shelters, rescue and rehabilitation centers, together with animal control, law enforcement, veterinarians, and city employees, who work tirelessly to help, protect, and find a home for every pet, and encourage those considering a new family pet member to visit the Halifax Humane Society or their nearest rescue to adopt a pet in need of a home. And whereas we express great gratitude to all the volunteers that helped through donations of their time, talent, and treasures to further the well-being of these pets. And whereas we encourage responsible pet ownership, including mandatory spaying and neutering, providing public education on the proper care and well-being of animals, and devoting personal time and resources to helping animals reunite families with lost pets, and helping to protect the welfare of helpless animals. And whereas the city of Ormond Beach adopted ordinance number 2013-04, allowing restaurants the ability to have doggy dining areas so patrons can dine with their dog. And whereas our community recognizes the benefits of pets who make life better by giving unconditional love and affection, providing companionship and comfort, encouraging us to get outside for exercise, and helping us to build and maintain our social connections. Now therefore, I Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Ormond Beach, do hereby proclaim July 19th, 2022, as a Home for Every Pet Day in the city of Ormond Beach, and urge all citizens to recognize the benefits of pets and collaborate in reaching the lowest rate ever for pet homelessness. Thank you all very much.
Mayor, it just makes me very proud to be a resident of the city of Ormond Beach and being so pet-friendly and supportive of our organization. We're trying to do the best we can to make sure that every pet has a home. Thank you for your support.
Some pictures, if we can get Rex maybe on this side and Ginger and... Now if Rex alerts on somebody is...
Ginger likes Rex.
All right, last but not least is Robert Carolyn. July is a special month in the city of Ormond Beach. And the highlight probably for all our residents is the 4th of July that Leisure Services puts on, but it's also Parks and Recreation Month. And so Robert Carolyn, our Director of Leisure Services, is here to accept the proclamation for Parks and Recreation. And I'll read through this. Whereas Parks and Recreation programs are integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Ormond Beach. Parks and Recreation promote health and wellness while improving the physical and mental health. Parks and Rec promote time spent in nature, which increases cognitive performance and well-being, assisting in alleviating illnesses such as depression, ADE, Attention Deficit Disorder, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Rec encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And Parks and Recreation programming and education activities, such as youth sports and environmental education, are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Rec is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Another little secret that a lot of people don't realize is your home values are greatly increased by the parks that are available in the city. If you need more information on that, you can ask Robert all about it. But the US House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And the city of Ormond Beach values the essential services that park and recreation professionals, staff, and volunteers perform to provide enrichment for citizens of all ages. Now therefore, I Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Ormond Beach, do hereby proclaim July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Ormond Beach, and urge all residents to join in recognizing the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Thank you very much. All right, audience remarks. I have Ike Leary up first.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Ike Leary, the proud DC Gurnau up here baiting tackle for 23 years, and I hope to have it another 23 years. I want to compliment Robert Caroline. We had a great fishing contest on the beach, real and the fun. That's my favorite of all three of them. The kids are on the beach, they're having fun. They ate a lot of hot dogs again, which is good. And fireworks, holy cow. We must have had 10,000 people in that park right there. I mean, you couldn't have put another person in there. It was packed. Okay, tomorrow I am going to what they call ICAST. It is the biggest tackle show in the world. There is people there from all over the world, China, Japan. It's where deals are made on everything, tackle, bait, clothing, anything that relates to bait and tackle or hunting. It's a big show. It's a three-day show. It's in Orlando. I'll be going tomorrow at 12 o'clock. However, I need to have an idea about what's going on at Casin Park, okay? One year ago, we had the plans. We had Alex and Sean draw up the plans. We went over and over and over and over. We came up with a plan. I think Joyce even approved it, I think. All of a sudden, what happened? Okay, it's been, it's been over a year. I would like to go tomorrow and make some orders or figure out the future over there as far as if we're going to have a bigger bait shop where I can increase my inventory. But I just don't have any idea, you know? I'll be in town tomorrow till 12 o'clock. If anybody wants to give me a call and if they have any insight on what the plan is, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you Ike.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. The commission held a workshop on that and directed us to go out for engineering services for that. And I believe those are on the street now. Is that correct Sean? So we're waiting for that part of the puzzle. That's Alex.
Alex Schuman, city engineer. The selection committee met Friday and we will be bringing that engineering recommendation to the commission at one of the expeditions.
Once you receive that, you'll make an award on the architect and then we'll move forward with the final designs and plans.
Mayor. Let's finish up. Audience remarks, if you have questions, I prefer to push those to the end of the meeting. This is the danger when we start commenting back and forth with people, you end up... Bill Denny is up next.
I'm Bill Denny from 1027 North Halifax. And I'm here representing the citizens of Ormond Beach. Last week, we held our candidate forum in the senior center. So I just wanted to take a moment and thank the city for letting us use the city, or excuse me, the senior center. It was a great venue. We had a big crowd and I think the candidates participated and enjoyed it and they got into it. And it was, for us, for CFOB, it's important to try to educate the voters. And this was the opportunity to have the voters see and hear in person the candidates. So I think it was very well worth it. A special thanks goes out to Mark Schwartz and his team from the Performing Arts Center. They set up all the audiovisual, which is obviously critical. And because it was new venue for us, they were very flexible and worked with us on how to set it up and maximize. So it was just a good teamwork there. So I appreciate that. And lastly, the police department. We had a last-minute request for a police presence there. Not because we had any real concern, just the national news. And it just seemed prudent to do. And it was very last minute, so we really appreciate the response there. Our next events will be September 6th, but at the library, we've asked League of Women Voters to explain the constitutional amendments that could be on the ballot for the upcoming election. Then for September 28th, same time, and at the senior center, we hope to have a candidate forum for the general election. And so we again appreciate the corporation and we think it's a critical mission to do.
Thank you. Next is Beth Jones. Jones, I'm sorry. You were writing fast.
Hello, my name is Beth Jones. I'm a resident of Ormond Beach with my family. My husband and I had the opportunity to go anywhere with our careers, but we wanted to stay in Ormond Beach because it's unique. It's small, it's beautiful, it's sought after. The parks are amazing. I think that's a highlight, definitely for everybody. The fireworks are also beautiful. It's our favorite family activity to bike to the bridge and watch the fireworks. I do have a concern though. December, Sanchez Park was burned down by somebody that had been complained about on numerous occasions by endless amounts of people. And forgive me if it has been fixed. I have been working the past few days, so we haven't been there, probably I guess in the past five days. So if it is there, then forgive me, but it wasn't there when we biked last week. And there's so much growth here in Ormond. Everybody wants to come to Ormond, right? But instead of that growth, why don't we focus on what we have? My, my kids have grown up on that park. It's not there. Our Melrose Park that we love to go to as well is pretty much not there anymore either because there's now a mansion that's being built there and all the construction workers take over that park. So I, I just urge you to, to protect what we have. We don't need to have growth. That's why people like Ormond. We don't need to have new big things. We need to have what we have. Those parks are amazing. That's everything that we just commended the parks for is true. My kids love to be at the parks. We love to bike to the parks. So I think we should keep our parks going. I think that seven months to have a park be repaired is not acceptable, especially since it's a memorial park. I think that should have been fixed immediately. So I, I am thankful to be a resident here. I'm thankful to have my family here. I hope that we don't add more apartment buildings because we don't need it. We need to keep our small-town feel and we need to protect what we have. And so I definitely urge you all to protect what we have and fix the things that our residents value. Thank you.
Thank you. Sanchez, I can tell you, just from personal knowledge, because I know I pushed and I think the rest of the commission pushed to get that completed as quickly as possible. Because it was a memorial park, the materials that were used and the colors were very specialized to that young man. I guess that they had done the memorial after. So, you know, with supply chain issues and whatnot, we worked extremely hard to replace it as quickly as possible. I think we even out of reserves paid it before worrying about any insurance money or anything like that. And I don't know exactly when it'll be done, but I know you can talk to Robert on your way out. He'll be happy to explain the, explain the situation to you. So yeah, trying to be sensitive to a family that has lost a loved one and replace that in a way that honors that young person was extremely important, I think, to the entire commission. And staff was sensitive to that as well and worked hard to work within those guidelines. It may have taken a little longer, but it's light years quicker than it would have otherwise been if it had just gone through the normal process. So we're sensitive to that as well. Commissioner Kent, I didn't want to make Mr. Leary wait through our entire agenda because we have a good one tonight. So whatever you had regarding him, we can address now since the city manager brought it up.
Good, yeah, that's what I was trying to do. I didn't want to make Ike have to wait all night long. I know it's a little out of our normal realm. It'll usually speak at audience comments, but since Joyce brought it up, I too thought it was appropriate. So Joyce, I just need some clarification because Alex came up here and I know that we all looked at some designs. Where are we? What did Alex say? I didn't quite understand it. Where are we in the process? Ike's going to a hunting slash bait convention tomorrow, leaving at noon. And I don't blame him. He wants to know what's going on, you know? So there's, there's apparently a lack of communication that I want to make sure we address and get fixed. And also, you know, as an elected official here, that's my district. I want to know also.
Sure, I'll let Sean get right to it.
Thanks. Hey Sean.
Hey, we'll give you a little bit of an update here. And I tell, we're there till noon tomorrow, it's not high early in the morning, we'll give you a little bit more information, obviously. One of the things, the purpose of this workshops was to gather information. We talked a lot about this being a generational project. We want to do it right. We don't want to miss anything. We don't want to leave anything on the table. So we did our best as a staff to put some information out there, to put some concepts together, concepts that we could, you know, present to the community, present to some of our different groups, gather from them what, what they like, what they don't like, what they want to see in this future park. The next step was to get an engineer on board and I thought we tried to explain that this is, that this is a process. We put in our request for qualifications out there. We received three responses. We reviewed those responses on last Friday. So that's the next step is to have the actual engineer. The building that we're working with is the building that we've worked with all along. Same size, the same dimensions. building that we've worked with all along. Same size, the same dimensions, the same building that Ike worked with, Polinoville, to get those things in that he wants to see in that actual building. The last kind of piece of the puzzle here is that engineering design, where we're going to take those pieces from the concept, do some more public...as we put those final pieces together, as we put the polish on it, as we tie it up, we'll have a couple more public meetings. I know we seem to be doing a lot of public meetings with this one, but again, we want to make sure that we get it right this time and do it. So that's where we're at, is we will likely have for you, I'm hoping the second meeting in August, is that what we're shooting for, having, bringing to you to award the contract for the selected engineer firm to do that engineering design?
Refresh your memory, when did we have the workshop on this? What month was that?
February.
February. Does it normally take five months to get an engineer?
We had...
I'm asking because I honestly don't know. I just feel like Ike is spot-on with that, and I don't know if it was any clearer, and I appreciate what you're giving me. I don't know if it's any clearer for me, or helping Ike out with his decision tomorrow, but...
I don't know that we're going at an overly speedy pace. I don't know that we're going at a snail's pace here either. I think we're going at a pace that allowed us to gather all that information, because that was one of the key components that we wanted to do, was in that request for qualifications, to put in the input that we got, to get all that transcribed minutes from those meetings, to get the feedback that we got from the citizens, from the citizen groups. We'll put that in there so that they can give us some concepts of their own, that they can do an engineering design from, using that input, and give us a chance to make a selection of an engineer based on what we see as someone who can do justice for that park, as opposed to just selecting an engineering firm that's got good engineering qualifications. We wanted to see somebody put a little bit of thought into the process, put a little bit of thought into the project, and to be able to project for us, hopefully, a plan that doesn't need a whole lot more iteration, that doesn't need a whole lot more review, and doesn't need to be torn apart. You know, we did concepts. Concepts are great. They're also done kind of quickly, and we're trying to put a lot of different elements into it. They put some more time into their concepts to be able to make sure that they're dimensionally correct, that they can work, and to be able to also take parts from Plan Two and Four and Five, and kind of get those all in there to do something that'll work for us. And, you know, again, I think we felt that the direction that we were receiving was, let's get it right, because this is a project that we want, this is a park that we want to have for not just the generation's going to use it today, the next generation. Last time we redid this was forty, fifty years ago. We don't want to do it again for another forty years.
Thank you for stepping forward, giving me the information, and thank you for agreeing to meet with Ike first thing in the morning. Appreciate it.
Whatever kind of deal you like, I'll give it to you. Just a quick clarification, if I could, for the last resident that came up. We received notification that the materials for Sanchez Park are in the warehouse, and they're scheduling an installation.
Great. Sean, one quick question on Ike's deal. He has a contract for a set amount of square footage, correct?
I believe so, yes.
And so, whatever ends up going, wherever it ends up going, it's not going to be less than that, correct?
It's not going to...no, the new plan was bigger, and I think that Kelly, kind of when she structured this contract for this time, reflected that this, the today and the tomorrow as well, but I can't speak 100%.
Okay, thank you. The minutes have been sent to the commission for review and also posted to the city's website. These are the June 7th, 2022 minutes. Any objection? Or, I'm sorry, any additions, deletions, or corrections? I move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. We are now on the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull any consent agenda items? Mayor, I'll pull item L. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I remind you that I need to have clarification on 8A?
We'll pull A. Need a motion to approve absent items A and L, unless anybody else has anything they'd like to pull.
I move approval of the consent agenda minus items A and L.
I second that motion. Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8A.
Resolution number 2022-80, a resolution amending the dates and times for the holding of regular meetings of the City Commission of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, for the months of August and October 2022, providing for exceptions thereto and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2022-80, read by title only.
City Manager, Shannon.
Mr. Mayor, the first item, the original item was moved from August 2nd, the meeting was moved from August 2nd to August 3rd for National Night Out. But National Night Out has been moved to October to be more friendly to families, and it's cooler that time of year. But we need to keep the meeting dated August 3rd, because we have planning items that are already scheduled, timed with that date. So even though we're recommending moving a meeting for National Night Out, we want to keep the August 3rd date. Secondarily, we were suggesting moving Tuesday, October 4th meeting to Wednesday, October 5th, because of National Night Out.
So you need a motion to keep the
amend, yes.
Meeting on Wednesday, August 3rd,
Right.
2022, as previously scheduled.
Correct.
And move the October meeting to the 4th, so that we can...I'm sorry, to the 5th, October 5th.
I think that one's already in there, but I just wanted to be clarified for that.
Okay.
So really, it's just to amend that August 2nd to August 3rd.
Let me get a motion on the resolution first, and then we'll amend it. This is A.
I'll move 8A, resolution 2022-80.
Second.
And I'd like to amend the motion by moving the August, the first August meeting to August 3rd.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We're getting good at this. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8L.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe we're not getting good at this. Let's call the vote on 8A as amended.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8L.
Sorry. Resolution number 2022-91, a resolution authorizing the execution of an amendment and renewal of a school resource officer agreement between the City of Ormond Beach and the School Board of Volusia County, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2022-91, read by title only.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second.
I move approval of resolution number 2022-91.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Commissioner Kent?
Yes. So this item is before us, and when this first came before us in 2017, four of the five elected officials were sitting up here. And we received a federal grant, Chief Godfrey, is that correct? We received a federal grant that paid for this position. And by the way, those of you that don't know, Officer Greg Stokes is the school resource officer at Ormond Beach Middle School, and when I tell you that it's a...Greg is an excellent police officer, but he might have missed his calling, because he's an excellent teacher. He's a phenomenal teacher. He's a great mentor. He's a really good human being. And Chief, you put the right person in the right position. That's not why I've pulled this from the agenda, to brag about Greg Stokes, because I could do that for another hour here, or to brag on you about the good decisions you make in putting the right people in the right positions. But when this first came before this commission, this was paid by the federal government three years, knowing that the fourth year had to be funded, which we funded it. So now, you know, we're in 2022, and we're looking at a five-year agreement with the school board. Now, here's City of Ormond Beach, budget of $100 million a year, roughly. Here's the school district, budget of $1 billion a year, and we're going to go in...and I just want to have this discussion with the commission. I'm not saying I'm a no to it, but at what point do we say, that's not our responsibility? The school board, that's your responsibility. So we're being, I think, very generous and nice to say, we're going to continue to fund this position, when you're down for positions right now. And I haven't talked to Greg Stokes about this. I don't think Greg would want to come out of the school. That's not what I'm suggesting. I'd like to keep him there. There is a need for him to be there. But is it Ormond, is it your job, as Ormond Beach taxpayers, to pay that half of that? You're paying a school board bill on your property taxes, and you're paying a City of Ormond Beach bill, okay? So I'm just saying, maybe that half of that, that $21,691.04 should stay in our pockets for the chief's discretion, and the school district should 100% fund this. And I know it said in the staff report, very well-written, and I don't know if it was your decision, Chief, or Randy Legal, your decision, or Joyce, your decision, but I love how it said in the supporting documentation that if another municipality gets a better deal than Ormond Beach, we get that deal. I like that, but at the same time, you're pointing to Randy, I appreciate that, of course, and Randy's amazing. But is this, at this point, our responsibility to continue to pay for this, is my question, Commission? So maybe one of you can convince me to say yes, but I want it clear on the record that Greg Stokes is the right person to be there. I believe an SRO should be there. I worked there. I saw it firsthand. He is definitely needed. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. We know the state of Florida has a guardian program. I don't know what other, you know, middle schools are doing. I know before I got there, there was a sheriff's deputy who split time between Ormond Middle and Holly Hill, and I don't know, because I didn't work there at the time, but I heard that he was almost always at Holly Hill.
Correct.
And we were getting calls all the time there. So it just comes down, this is about the money for me, and where it should come out of, which fund. So that's why I pulled this commission. That's why I wanted to talk about it. I just think, you know, that every penny, every dollar counts.
Deputy Mayor Persis?
I just, you know, thank you for your comments, Commissioner Kent.
Oh, you're welcome.
I just, you know, one of our goals and priorities is public safety, and I do feel like it is the city's responsibility to keep everybody safe. And I have no problem with the City of Ormond Beach helping the school board keep people safe. I mean, bottom line, we want our kids safe. We know the climate that's out there today with, you know, mass shootings and everything. So at this point, I really don't have an issue with it at all.
I would just say that philosophically, you're making a very good point and everything, but when it comes down to it, the citizens would just rather make sure the school's safe. And that's, every dollar counts, and that's where they want it counted.
Okay. Anyone else? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Now would be the appropriate time, if any commissioner wants to comment on any consent agenda items. Commissioner Kent?
Yes. I want to talk about item K, the Joe and L Willie Daniels South Ormond Neighborhood Center. I am so pleased that that is what we decided to name the South Ormond Neighborhood Center. You know, Joe and L Willie Daniels are fixtures in our community, and with the very sad passing of L Willie Daniels, it was a big loss in Ormond Beach. And Joe Daniels, if you know him, you're never going to forget him. He is...well, I'll just tell you this. He's a mentor to Greg Stokes, okay? So I don't have to brag much about him, because I already did about Greg, and that's the kind of company that he keeps. So I'm just super excited that we went ahead and named that, the Joe and L Willie Daniels South Ormond Neighborhood Center. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to comment on item D. It's, I'm happy to see us paying our employees well and agreeing to a union contract, because they deserve it. I would also like to touch up on item F, where if you look at it, the cost for this AC repair type thing, did it double? It doubled in price from what we thought it was going to. Just to mention that, because of inflationary pressures we're feeling, now, something like that, just maintaining what we have is costing us 100% more.
Thank you. Commissioner Selby?
Mayor, I'd like to just comment on item E. Item E is the renewal of the environmental permit for the landfill at the Nova Rec Center. And I brought up a while back, I think it was when we were discussing the leisure services, Parks and Rec Master Plan, that I think we have about, the city has about 65 acres, if I'm not mistaken, at Nova Rec. And about half of that, approximately half of that, if you look at an aerial photo, is the area that essentially is only used for the remote control airplane club. I think they're the only people that actually use it. It's the high part in the very back. And I suggested, and I'll, you know, I don't expect any action on this tonight, but I suggested that we should look at what it would cost to reclaim that land, because that's, call it 25 to 30 acres, right in the center of Ormond Beach. And while it may be a big number, that's land that, you know, isn't going to be, isn't available anywhere else in that, you know, in that proximity, where we could have a whole bunch of additional recreation activities there. Now, what's involved, what it would cost to do that, I have no idea, but I think we should, at some point, we should at least direct staff to try to guess or estimate. Maybe we ought to hire a consultant to do it. And maybe these people who are doing this report are the people to do it. I don't know. But I just think that that's something that, long-term, would be good to know for the city, so at least we can think about where would we ever get the money to do it, and whether or not we would want to do it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner? Anyone else? If not, we'll move to public hearings, and I'll open the public hearings. Ask the clerk to read 9A by title only, please.
Ordinance number 2022-14, an ordinance amending the future land use element and the intergovernmental coordination element of the comprehensive plan by incorporating the provisions of the Second Amendment North US Highway 1 Interlocal Service Boundary Agreement, ISBA, between the City of Ormond Beach and the County of Volusia, providing for transmitting copies of the notice and amendment to the state reviewing agencies, the County of Volusia, and any other local government or governmental agency requesting a copy, providing for public hearings, providing for conflicting ordinances, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-14, read by title only.
Thank you. I have two cards on 9A, and we'll start with Joseph Valerio.
Hello. My name is Joe Valerio. I live at 1213 North Side Drive. I've been looking through this, and I have a couple comments. It's going to be quick. On this particular land, as far as development, I'm still concerned about how we're going to treat the wetlands and oak trees. Do you know the wetlands protect aquifers? That's one question. The other thing I was concerned about is, on the other side of the Highway 1, there are a lot of flooding issues. And a lot of the water is redirected underneath the highway, and it's going to go heading right for Ridge Haven. Are we dealing with how we're going to deal with that extra water in case they have a heavy rainfall? Those are the two questions that I have. You don't have to answer them now, but I just want to bring that point up. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Glenn Storch.
My name is Glenn Storch. I represent the applicant in this case, and I do want to address the comments that we just had. Of course, we're going to be looking at those things. Almost all the wetlands will be preserved on the site, and we'll be able to show all this when we have our neighborhood... this when we have our neighborhood meeting. Uh, at the same time, of course, uh, water, uh, the last thing we want is any storm water to go off the site and affect anybody else's property. So, uh, this will be fully permitted, and, uh, but we'll be able to explain this, and I think you'll be very happy we'll come up with. And I should point out as well, this is only for the comp plan amendment. You're going to get to that issue, get it in some.
Right. Thank you. Uh, Stephen, can you explain the St. John's River Water Management Rules as far as the storm water issue goes? I mean, people say that in the application process, and with any development, and it seems like it gets quickly glossed over, the fact that no additional water is allowed to leave the property once the new development is completed, that's what I'm asking you to cover.
Correct. So, so we're at a land use stage as we get into a zoning document. Uh, there are Ridge Haven submittals on our website, at, at our planning website. So with that, there was a storm water analysis that's reviewed by both St. John's River Water Management District and our civil engineer. Um, our state statutes basically say you can't drain any more water than was draining in the pre-development condition. So both St. John's and the city works at that. We are aware of, um, issues and, and drainage basements in the US One Corridor, so that's part of the Ridge Haven review also, and plantation.
Thank you. Any other questions for Stephen?
Yeah, so Stephen, I mean, my basic understanding of storm water is any water that comes to you now, comes to your parcel now, you have to continue to receive that water and treat it. And any water that falls on your site, you have to treat. And then there has to be an appropriate way to, uh, vacate that water, allow that water to leave.
Correct. And in many applications, they can demonstrate that they're discharging, they're discharging less water in the post-development condition, and they're discharging it at a slower rate. So that's all part of the engineer analysis of both city staff and St. John's reviews.
Right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. This is, uh, second reading, I don't have any additional cards, just need a motion.
Mayor, I'll move ordinance 2022-14.
Second.
We've been seconded, any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 9B.
Ordinance number 2022-18. An ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map to incorporate the provisions of the Second Amendment amended North US Highway One Interlocal Service Boundary Agreement between the city of Orman Beach and the county of Volusia authorizing transmittal, providing for public hearings, providing for conflicting ordinances, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2022-18, read by title only.
Thank you, and I'll ask, uh, Planning Director Stevens Breaker to speak on this item.
Good evening, Stevens Breaker, Plan Director. This is a request related to the Second Interlocal Service Boundary Agreement. The area that we're discussing is shown in pink on the map and also the hatched area. So Plantation Oaks Boulevard would run, um, here on the map, and then US Highway One is here. With the Interlocal Service Boundary Agreement and the Ridge Haven properties, there were three amendments that were required. The last agenda item was this First Amendment, so that establishes the overall text amendments. And then there were two amendments that amended the land use. The 89.99 acres include Ridge Haven and the out parcels. And then there was a 19-acre parcel that was part of the original Interlocal Service Boundary Agreement. So when the commission adopted this in May, we sent it off to Department of Economic Opportunity. And basically, their response was, you can't adopt this one before you adopt the, the overall one. So in consultation with our city attorney's office, what we decided to do was just to do the entire application over. We just adopted the primary one, so now we're seeking to adopt this one again. So the process, um, the Interlocal Service Boundary Agreement amendments start in December. Volusia County adopted it in February of this year. The annexation of this land area occurred in March. The land use, um, is going on now. It occurred on June 9th before Planning Board, and obviously, it's before the commission now. There is a subdivision plan that's on our website, that, that everyone can see exactly what was submitted. The neighborhood meeting for the development, so the next stage, will be held on July 26th at the Trails Clubhouse. So there'll be an opportunity to discuss the site plan, which will eventually come back to the Planning Board and commission for their final action. So before you tonight is a land use amendment, so there's no site plan, they're just talking about density. The area in pink is owned by Ridge Haven, and under the county's land use, there is a, a minimum requirement of four acres. So 337 lots are required, with a maximum of eight. So the property owner came to city staff and offered to reduce it down to three. That's a reduction of 422 units on this property versus what the county land use allowed. There's also a reduction of building entitlements. Again, the site plan will come as we go through the development process with the neighborhood meeting next Tuesday night. The areas shown in hatched are not owned by the applicant, so they're individual property owners. These areas will maintain their existing county land use. So if they had eight units in the county, they'll maintain the eight units in the city also, through our, our lands and zoning. The Planning Board recommended approval of this application. The next step would be the second reading, and then transmittal back to the Department of Economic Opportunity.
Any questions for Stephen?
No questions, but gosh, that's peculiar, you know, looking at that piece of land and seeing those enclaves in there, and they're going to be keep the, the county's designation, which rightfully they, they should, could, I guess, but it just, um, I don't know that I've seen many of these.
And Plantation Oaks was similar, and there are some other, so, so the old plats have, has sold lots with no infrastructure. So as people try to develop and redevelop, these are the issues that they're experiencing.
So if I could jump in very quickly, just to clarify, so the agreement, the ISBA area is a, is a product of, um, the negotiation efforts between the city and the county regarding some of the unsavory uses that were being allowed in, um, and I, I won't mention any of them, but, you know, we've kind of cleaned that up. Um, we were able to use some statutory, uh, provisions that, um, allow the city to annex land even though it may create some enclaves. And that's, that's allowed specifically by the agreement as well. Um, the, the trade-off is, is we don't force these people to come in, um, they, they do it voluntarily, but in the same token, they're allowed to keep the same, um, zoning and land use regulations in the county until they may want to come in. So this is a bit of an anomaly. It doesn't apply in every situation, only in this one specific ISBA area. So that's, that's the answer to the question.
Thanks, Randy.
So, so just, so I'm clear, so the hashed areas are not, they didn't get annexed?
They're not annexed, so this, through the Interlocal Service Boundary Agreement, we have the right to do the land use and zoning, but they're not annexed, correct?
All right. Thank you. And let me ask you this, Stephen, so potentially, you could have a, uh, development in the county that's over twice as dense as what we're approving on septic.
So as Ridge Haven develops, they will put the water and sewer lines literally right in front of these properties. So I, I don't, I don't, unless these properties develop before Ridge Haven, which means they would have to build the roads, I, I think the infrastructure will be there, assuming Ridge Haven is built first.
All right. So then they'd be forced to, if they want our water and sewer?
To annex.
Annex and comply with the densities that's there. I just, I mean, the way it happens, sometimes there's always those people that don't want to pay for septic, uh, sewer charges. And so can they, if they want to just develop in the county, develop it over twice the density and, and put in septic there and not take advantage of the, uh, water and sewer that'd be available to them?
There's a, there's a statutory limit, I think it's 100 feet for sewer, so if the, if the sewer's within 100 feet, they're required to connect, if it's not within 100 feet. But my, um, recollection of Ridge Haven designed had roads and utilities near all the enclaves.
Understood. That makes sense. Yep, interesting. Thank you. Any other questions for Stephen? Thank you, Stephen. Uh, 9B, I only have one card from the applicant. Anybody have questions from the applicant? It's fairly straightforward.
I move approval of ordinance number 2022-18.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 9C.
Ordinance number 2022-19. An ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a first amended development order for the Regal Multifamily Planned Business Development located at 215 Williamson Boulevard, authorizing the redevelopment of a former movie theater, construction of a maximum of 312 multifamily residential units, and the building dimensions greater than 180 feet in length, establishing conditions and expirations of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2022-19, read by title only.
Thank you, and we'll start with, uh, Stevens Breaker again on this. Planning Director Stevens Breaker.
This is a request for a planned business development amendment. Uh, the property is located at 215 Williamson Boulevard, so the property is located on Williamson Boulevard. Granada Boulevard is shown here at the bottom of the screen. In looking at the surrounding properties, um, to the north of the property, there is a shopping center. To the east, there are lands which are in unincorporated Volusia County, which are designated conservation. To the south of it are both, uh, conservation areas in the city of Daytona Beach, and land area designated for multifamily or assisted living. And then west of the property are commercial uses along Williamson Boulevard. The project is located within the city's transportation concurrency exception area that was established in 2010. In 2000, in February 1st, 2022 this year, there was a redevelopment plan for the project. The redevelopment plan had the retention pond being relocated here, so you would have a commercial out parcel that could use, um, restaurants, drive-throughs, medical offices types of uses. The parcel four would save the existing theater with commercial uses, and then the parking field was to be redeveloped for commercial uses. So the, the redevelopment was, um, for commercial uses. The development order amendment seeks multifamily uses. Um, they are seeking 26 units per acre, which would allow a maximum of 312 apartment units. The site plan shows 310 in three buildings. Two of the buildings are four-story buildings, which are interior corridors, so all the access would be internal to the site, and they would have a pool amenity center here and a courtyard amenity center here. There's a smaller building here with units that would be almost like a townhouse use unit. All the development, redevelopment is within the existing parking field and where the old movie theater we demolished. So all the buffers would remain, the, um, storm water ponds would receive fountains and be cleaned, and then the landscape buffers along Williamson would also be cleaned. The city, uh, last time the city has permitted multifamily development was in 2010 with the Madison Glen and the Olive Grove Apartments. Um, they did permit in 2017 the Orman Renaissance condominiums, so that was a different form of ownership, which they have built, um, one unit of, of 28. So the multifamily u- use is an allowed use in this B8 zoning district. These are elevations that were included in your packet, so looking at the courtyard pool area, and then looking at the exterior. The reason that the amendment is before the commission, um, so every property in the state of Florida has a land use and a zoning. So under the land use entitlements, they're allowed 32 units per acre on this property. So that would get them about 384 units. Under the zoning, they're allowed 120. And, and the question is, why is there a difference between land use and zoning? So in 2009, when we were doing, um, updates to the zoning amendments, there was the thought process that city staff should have the ability, the Site Plan Review Committee, to approve up to 10 units per acre. And then anything over 10 units should have a public hearing in front of the Planning Board and Commission, and have public input and review the development order criteria. So the 26 is obviously less than 32, but it still requires this public hearing. The second item is, our Land Development Code says, um, any multifamily building length greater than 180 meter feet requires a public hearing. It's not a prohibition, but it really is just another step that if you have a large building, that you conduct a public hearing and review the development order criteria. The Site Plan Review Committee has reviewed the application. The staff found it consistent with the transportation concurrency exception area, consistent with the housing goals. That transportation concurrency exception area does not require a traffic study. It's part of the Land Development Code. The civil engineer did provide a, an analysis based on the trip generation from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, trying to, to basically show that the multifamily use was less than a movie theater and less than what a commercial, uh, project could generate. Within your packet is a school concurrency, um, certificate, and then staff concluded it was consistent with the commercial and the conservation land surrounding. The Planning Board recommended approval with a seven to zero vote. Staff is recommending approval. If approved, it would be heard on second reading on August 3rd, and then it would go back to the Site Plan Review Committee, and then eventually demolition of the movie theater construction inspection.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen at this time? No. Thank you. We'll go to cards, and we'll start with Kimberly Friedman.
Good evening, Kimberly Friedman. I'm Director of Property Management for the Jacky Corporation. The Jacky Corporation owns parcel number 2342300800040, also known as Orman Town Square, which abuts this subject property at 215 Williamson Boulevard. We've been advised that there will be no requirement for a fence or wall separating the two parcels of land. Our concerns are, as a commercial property abutting a residential multifamily development, are for the safety of the residents of this proposed project. With no fence or wall between our parcels, this will allow residents to enter into our parcel at the rear of all of our commissar buildings, which serves only for parking of tenant parking, and as major drivelanes for delivery vehicles such as semis to Publix. This is clearly a safety issue and creates a major liability for our company. Our commercial property was developed to have entry into Orman Town Square by dedicated ingress and egress at our three entrances, and not at the rear of the property. We are requesting that this council and the Planning Board of the City of Orman Beach recommends the developer of 215 Williams Boulevard to erect a fence or wall along the adjoining parcel lines for the safety of their residents and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Valerio.
My name is Joe Valerio, I live at 213 North Side Drive. This probably became one of my favorite subjects, I guess. Uh, on June 9th, I have the Planning Board, and I asked to talk about a traffic assessment analysis. And to me, analysis, like I do analysis, you have a presentation, and you have all these something that's listed on in that chart and what, what the justifications are, have an idea what the model does, and then you have the results. And those results are typically like a graph. On the vertical axis, you would have the average daily trips, on the bottom, you'd have, here is the size of the apartment complex, this many, this many, this many. You may have parallel to that, you'll have maybe a hotel, uh, the, um, theater, how big that should be. And that type of thing that people need to see, so you can take a look at what really is going to happen. Now, I'm looking at this 309,000, no, 3D912, I, I, I don't believe that number, let's talk about a full theater. You don't have to build a, a whole theater, you can be half of the theater. That chart can give you a better idea what's appropriate for, for that area, the highly condensed intersection. And one thing that's beyond that chart is infrastructure, what could they handle? I've not seen any of that. And I think that the people I talked to were upset about this, and wanted to know what's going on, and all of you, I would hope that you would not vote yes on this today until you do that analysis and present that to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. And Beth Jones. Gee, I think I saw her walk out.
Uh, and I did get an email late today from Jeremy Cruz. Uh, it was very short, um, said, I'm hoping I can convince you to not sell the movie theater to become an apartment complex. I think the location has potential to be so much more. If given the time, we could turn it into an all-in-one entertainment and event venue, have everything from bands, recording and rehearsing, to concerts and live streams, from comedy sets and independent or public domain movies to birthday parties and music lessons. It would provide Orman residents with another option for entertainment. We could work together to make it suit the community's needs, and install solar awnings and turn it into a community solar program to provide cheaper electricity to those in need. Uh, I'm sorry- sorry this is late. Hope we can use the structure to bring more value to Ormond residents. I figured it was worth trying. So that was a nicely written email, and I'll ask the city clerk make that part of the record. The city does not own that property. I would point that out, just for the record as well, but a nice sentiment in the email. And next is the applicant, Paul Hollup.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. My name is Paul Hollup. I am one of the managing members of Southwest I ninety-five LLC, which is the property owner of this project. We've been working on this for close to eighteen months now, and we've knocked on a lot of doors to try to find a use for redevelopment of this parcel. I'll try to be brief. Some of my slides are repetitive of what Stephen has already shown you, but the one item that we skipped over was a thirty-foot buffer, natural buffer in this area that will remain with the redevelopment of the site, which is depicted there. And as he mentioned, the retention ponds that exist have no fountains. I guess back when this was built, I think it was permitted in the county and then ultimately annexed into the city. But with redevelopment, there'll be lighted fountains on three of the retention ponds, two of them at the front entry area, and a third one at the rear of the property. The movie theater sign, which currently is permitted to remain under the existing PBD, will be removed, and they will be installed in monument-type signage, new signage for the project. In response to traffic, traffic is, we did a traffic analysis. We use the ITE manual. It's the same format that you use whether you're in the city, the county, whether you're dealing with FDOT or the state, you use the ITE manual. And right now, the embedded trips for the movie theater is three thousand nine hundred and twelve trips, average daily trips. With the apartment, it will go to two thousand sixty-two trips, a reduction of eighteen hundred and fifty average daily trips, or approximately a reduction of forty-seven percent. So we went back and looked at developing this site as a commercial site, and just the out parcel where the existing retention pond is, if we were to develop a fast food use there, this shows that fast food without drive-through at three thousand five hundred square foot restaurant building, that alone would produce two thousand five hundred and six trips, average daily trips. And then if we, if we develop the rest of the property as a shopping center, which we, we've certainly tried, knocked on a lot of doors to get a tenant in there for retail, whether it be a box, BJ's, or Target, those would produce forty-two hundred and ninety-four average daily trips. So if we develop this property under commercial, which is currently permitted, we would be looking at almost six thousand eight hundred average daily trips versus two thousand sixty-two trips that the apartment would generate. Your policies promote this type of infill product exactly in this location because it is in the core of your commercial, your largest commercial area in the city. And so your own policies promote this type of density, and to provide enhanced mobility options, which the developer will do. Some of the things that will be done to promote alternatives to vehicular movement is, there'll be a Votran bus stop built at the front entry area. There'll be parking spaces designated for Uber and Lyft transit. There'll be parking designated for the various delivery services. There'll be a sidewalk connection, of course, from the project to Williamson. They're going to provide electric vehicle charging stations on site. They have storage for bicycle, storage for bicycles, and charging stations for bicycles. So all of these things are exactly what your policy promotes and encourages to get vehicles off the road. And it's not just the alternative use. It's also because of its location, trip lengths are much shorter if they have to go to the groceries or to Lowe's. Certainly, they can walk or ride a bike, but even if they use vehicular for services and retail and restaurants, the trip length is significantly less because of its location to the services and retail that's in the immediate community. I won't, I'll skip over most of the elevations, but it is a first-class project. I don't know of anything else like this being built in our community. It is all, as Stephen said, interior corridor product. It's not your typical two- or three-story exposed balcony, exposed stairway type of apartment. It has a lot of amenities, and it promotes social connection with the community, with the multifamily community on site. They have, they've built, this is from their product that they built in Tampa, a lot of social areas in the buildings. And they also have, for work at home, they have office area, conference rooms, for those that work from home but don't want to work inside the apartment. They provide these type of facilities for their residents. The other issue with regard to a fence or a wall, this is the area where we abut the rear of the Ormond Town Center. This, there's no access for vehicles to leave this site and go into the Ormond Town Center. There's a natural buffer here. There's significant landscaping, new landscaping that you can see from this landscape plan, and this is only part of it. The other section of it is not, is on a separate page. Yours code does not require a fence or a wall. The underlying zoning is B eight. The Ormond Town Commercial Center is B eight. If, in fact, this was residential land when Ormond Town built, they would have had to have built the wall. But as far as building a wall voluntarily, I don't think the developer is inclined to do that. It's not required under your code. There may be some type of fencing. There's a dog park in this area that is fenced in. There's a maintenance room here. And then the rest of this area is either a natural buffer or newly planted landscaping. And right now, the current count is three hundred and twelve new trees to be planted on the site. If you've gone out to the theater, by no fault of this city, there's not a nice tree on that, a planted tree on that entire property. I don't know why and how, but all the island trees never made it. They're, they're in horrible condition. They've been that way for quite some time. So most of that's going to all be excavated and demoed. And right now, the tree count is three hundred and twelve newly planted trees for the site. So there's going to be significant landscaping. I don't envision that anyone is going to walk through this, this natural buffer is fairly heavy, and then there's going to be additional plantings. And I just don't envision that people are going to try to trample through that. And then there's additional landscape on Ormond Town side of the property. The density increase, Stephen mentioned, your land use plan allows thirty-two units to an acre. We're asking for approximately twenty-six units to an acre. This particular project will significantly increase your tax base. I think this property is currently, as a closed theater, on your tax bill for maybe four million dollars, and it's going to be almost a sixty-million-dollar investment by the Live Development Group. The city will collect in excess of eight hundred thousand dollars in water sewer utility impact fees, over three hundred thousand dollars in parks recreation fees, impact fees. It'll be one of the largest construction projects ever built in Ormond Beach. And as Stephen mentioned, I think the, when this gets, if this is approved and constructed, when it gets done, it'll be almost fifteen years since the last apartment, multifamily apartment project was constructed in Ormond Beach. It is not a rezoning. It is just simply, we're asking for an increase for the density to be approved. That's a major component of this moving forward. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Any questions for Paul?
Yes, Mayor, I have questions. Mr. Hollup, in the write-up, and of course, there is a connection through Discount Tire. Is there a cross-access easement? What is that of record? What is that?
There is, there is a cross-access easement that I believe when the theater was built was required by the county and/or the city for a second access point in case the main entrance was under fire, couldn't be, you know, the ingress egress was cut off. And that's a permanent recorded access agreement.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That's the end of the cards. I want to do disclosures first, and then we can go on to a motion in a second. And I'll start with the disclosures. Paul is a campaign contributor. I've known Paul's family since I was a six, seven-year-old kid running around Forest Hills. Also had, knew his future-to-be-wife when I was in high school. And then for many years now, Paul has been a supporter and campaign contributor. So I think I had some discussion with you on traffic issues. That's all I can remember. We didn't have extensive conversations about this. So mostly on basing what I've read in the staff report and from the planning board. Any other disclosures?
Mayor, Mr. Lichtman reached out to me, Charles Lichtman, who's a partner in the ownership of the land. And we didn't actually speak, but we traded voice messages or texts.
Anyone else? And also, Charles Lichtman has been a longtime supporter of me as well.
I would say I believe Mr. Hollup showed me the blueprints of this thing. It might have been six months ago, but we haven't had a formal discussion about it, or that type of thing was sort of new at the time. That's the only discussion I've had with him about this project.
I just heard I've had no formal discussion with Mr. Hollup about this project.
I have not had any discussion with Mr. Hollup either.
Good deal. I just need a motion second for discussion.
Mayor, I'll move ordinance twenty-two twenty-two dash nineteen.
A second motion. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, sure.
Commissioner.
Sure. Well, first of all, this, I love this project. I mean, I love it because it is so high-end. I haven't seen a multifamily project like this anywhere, and this is, fits beautifully into what Ormond Beach, you know, I don't think we could find a better apartment development company. I've never heard of Live before, but they're, looking at their website, they have some gorgeous facilities. So I like the product that will be built. I think it's a perfect redevelopment project for this site. It's on a four-lane road, so access is abundant. It's in our transportation, what do we call that, Stephen? Transportation? Concurrent exception area. So the, the trip count is a bonus. I mean, that's a bonus, that it actually reduces the number of trips than, than the prior use generated. It's been twelve years to date since an apartment complex was built in Ormond Beach. That's, that's a shocking, shocking statistic, that it's been over a decade since a part, any apartment has been built in Ormond Beach. I mean, think about it. That's, you know, we, I think we have a duty to provide housing for all kinds of people, you know, not just people who own their own homes, but also people who are renting. Maybe somebody who's building a home needs to rent for a year or two before they're new to the area, and they, before they buy something, they want to check it out very thoroughly. So to have a new project built. And the fact that really what we're talking about is increasing density to twenty-six units per acre when the comp plan allows thirty-two, was it? Thirty-two. Comp plan allows thirty-two, so they're not even going to the, and I think the other, the other requirement that we're addressing, which is a maximum building length of one hundred and eighty feet. I don't, I don't know what the length of this building is, but when you look at the renderings, there's certainly nothing objectionable about it. And for the site, there's nothing objectionable about it. I do have one question, and that is, the school concurrency letter, maybe, I don't know if you can answer this or not, Stephen, but I didn't understand when the schools are at capacity, or actually, two, I think two of them, the elementary school and maybe the middle school, were at, at or slightly above capacity, and that the school said, we don't have any objection to this.
So the school board reviews it at two separate stages, one at a zoning level, and then two at a construction level. And I don't have the concurrency certificate in front of me, but I believe their level of service goes up to a hundred and fifteen percent. So I don't, you know, so you see it's over a hundred, but their acceptable level of service is a hundred and fifteen percent. So that, that's why you see those numbers.
That explains it, because it was only a couple of percentage points above, above their, above their capacity.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, persons.
I just want to make a comment. I think I'm very impressed with how this apartment complex looks. It has all the new, modern things that people are asking for today. I mean, charging stations for your car, for your bike, community centers inside the building. Mr. Hollup said there's, they're going to add three hundred and something trees to the area, which will look absolutely beautiful. I love the water features that are surrounding the area, and it just looks like something that would be in Ormond Beach.
I'll say on the practical level, nobody wants to live in a town that has an abandoned movie theater. And it's going to be very hard to redevelop certain areas. This could be one of them. And I think this is the right redevelopment for this area. I know it's going to be, because I bet as soon as it's built and starting to be sold, it's going to sell out, wickedly split. Furthermore, this is by definition smart growth. Have the densities, compact, using already in-place infrastructure on a commercial corridor where people's travel times to the services is minimal. People, people, some people are going to walk across the street to go to Chili's and Applebee's and that type of thing. That's what we want to see. And so I definitely support the project.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Ken.
Thank you. So just a couple of things I want to touch on. First of all, is the growth rate in Ormond Beach, because we heard earlier from a speaker about, you know, we don't want more growth. There's been a lot of growth. And I like to talk about facts. So the facts are this. Nineteen years after I've served on this commission, we've grown less than one percent a year. There were about forty thousand people in Ormond Beach in two thousand and four. And, you know, we can, we can split the hairs if you want, but there's about forty thousand people in Ormond Beach in two thousand and twenty-two, maybe forty-two thousand five hundred right now. In two thousand and eight, we went down to thirty-six thousand. People were leaving the state of Florida, but they've come back. And we're basically built out, for the most part. We don't have some of the explosive growth that they have in Daytona Beach, and other places where there's tons of undeveloped land. Also, I'm glad that it was brought up that we haven't, and I agree with you, Commissioner Sully, it's pretty remarkable, we haven't had an apartment complex in twelve years developed in our city limits. It's also hard to believe that the Olive Grove was twelve years ago. How did that happen, you know? Was my kid really four years old when we were having that discussion? But I guess he was. So the other thing is, that always blows my So the other thing is, that always blows my mind, is there's a group out there that developers are bad, evil. And I'm just going to talk what I know about Paul Hollup. So Paul lives in Ormond Beach. This is where he puts his head down at night. This is his home. And the development that he's done in Ormond Beach is absolutely stunningly beautiful. And it's something that I think he's proud of. And I'm proud to have supported it in the past. For the consistency with concurrency with transportation, our housing goals, the planning board gave this a 7-0 recommendation. We already mentioned allow 32 units an acre. This is asking for 26 units an acre. And if you're going to put an apartment complex somewhere, you know, where are you going to put it? Well, where are they all going up right now? They're all going up on Williamson, Clyde Morris, LPGA. They're all out in that area. So this checks that box of infill development, of a smart use on where you're going to put something. And then what many of the others have said as far as the top-tier level apartment complex that this is going to be, it's, it's something that Ormond will be proud to have. There were the financial benefits that we heard that will come in. And then someone mentioned about being able to walk across the street to go to different restaurants or different, different places that you want to go to. So for those reasons, I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I will support it as well. The 7-0 planning board recommendation weighed heavily on my decision. The fact that it has been 12 years, 15 years, whatever number you want to use there, since we've had any new apartments. And then the big selling point to me was the walkability. Being able to walk to the restaurants across Williamson, being able to walk to Love's to do your shopping if you like healthy, healthy stuff, or being able to walk to Publix. And some folks I talked to said, oh, nobody's going to walk. But people will walk if it's available to them. If they have the opportunity to, to not take the car out. It's November, December, it's a little cooler. And they can walk over to the bank and do their, their banking, or they can walk over to the town square and get their haircuts or specialty items or groceries or whatever. People will walk if they have the ability to. And so by putting this so close to so many uses, I think it allows for that. So unless there's anything else, I'm prepared to call the vote on 9D.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and we're going to take a five-minute break before 9D. Take their seats. Thank you for your indulgence on that long break. And we're going to start on 9D, and we'll call the meeting back to order.
Ordinance number 2022-20, and ordinance amending paragraph C, official zoning map of section 2-01, established of Article 1, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Official Zoning Map of Chapter 2, District and General Regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code. By amending the official zoning map to rezone a certain parcel, a real property, totaling approximately 2.53 acres located at 55 North Nova Road, Belushi County Parcel Number 4221-00-01-0011, from B-8 Commercial to Plan Business Development, PBD, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2022-20, read by title only.
Thank you. And I'll ask Planning Director Stevens Breaker to speak on this one.
Stevens Breaker, planning director. This presentation incorporates both the zoning map amendment and the issue of the development order. So the property is located at 55 North Nova Road, shown on the screen. On the side of the map is North Nova Road. Stirhouse Drive is located by Chick's, Chicken Salad Chick. North Old Kings Road is located here. And then West Granada Boulevard is located at the top of the map. So it's centrally located to four roads. The property has two existing easements, which are important to note. One is an FPL easement. The other is a parking easement in favor of Chicken Salad Chick. So those two factors played into the site plan development. The first action being sought is a zoning map, zoning map amendment from the B-8 Commercial Zoning District to the Plan Business Development. So the zoning map amendment establishes the framework, which allows a second action, which is the issuance of the development order. The site plan shown, this is the FPL easement. So the engineer did a great job of not putting anything that would interfere with the transmission lines that run through the property. So there's parking, there's low-level landscaping. Part of the redesign has incorporated new stormwater areas for the development area. This project is a redevelopment of a former house of worship. This is Nova Road on the top of the screen. So as one comes into the site, there is an area to access the car wash. There is a car wash tunnel, which is located here. And there's also a detail tunnel. So once someone gets done with a car wash, they have three options. They can either leave the site, they can use the vacuums that are provided for self-service, or they could come back in around to the, to the vehicle detailing. And the, the business owner, property owner can go through those if the commission is interested in those details. There is a historic tree on the site, which they are saving, which is located right here. They are doing many pedestrian connections to Nova Road. They're installing a bus shelter. So they're doing a lot of the multimodal corridor things within our transportation concurrency exception area. This is a site rendering of the project. They are before the commission for two reasons. One is the vehicle wash and detailing use is not allowed use in the B-8 zoning district. So they're seeking to amend it to include it through the issuance of the development order. And the second item is signage. They've requested additional signage to help customers locate where the car wash entrance, exit, and the tunnels are. So they've requested additional signage. One of the issues that came up during the planning board meeting was the access at Stirhouse and Nova. There was some frustration with vehicles making illegal left-hand turns or making a right-hand turn in an immediate U-turn. Our Public Works has done some work to trim up the vegetation, make sure all the signage is visible, to make sure all the signage is present. It is an ongoing issue that is, is in essence, a city issue. It's not something that the applicant created. There are alternative ways to get to West Granada through North Old Kings Road. So there are ways to go back on to Granada westbound or to Nova Road going southbound. So that is an issue that's ongoing. There is discussions with Department of Transportation for improvements along North Nova Road, and that is in process. Planning board recommended approval of the zoning by a 7-0 vote. The development order was approved 5-2. The two people who did denial spoke of the concerns at Stirhouse and Nova. Staff is recommending approval. If approved, it would come back to the commission for a second reading on August 3rd and the applicant and business owner's intenances.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen? Deputy Mayor, persons.
At the intersection where the two planning board members were concerned, what are the plans to make that better? Are there any in place at this time?
So we've done, basically, the Public Works has done some clearing of the landscaping and to emphasize the signage. So those are some immediate things. There's been discussions of putting little plastic bollards, you know, not bollards, but plastic things that kind of force a right-hand turn. But no matter, the true issue is with the median. Because even if you force them to do a right-hand turn, they can quickly just jump over here and do a U-turn. So we're aware of the issues. You can't necessarily legislate people's driving habits, but we're aware of it, and we're looking at it. And if there's any other options that we can think of, we'll, we'll definitely try to implement that.
But there will be a sign that says, don't turn, no left turn, or like?
There's, there's two signs. There's, there's one sign located right here, before you get to the intersection. There's another sign here, and then the pavement marking says, right turn only. So there's multiple signs.
Right. So, and it, so the quickest way, I guess if you need to do a U-turn, if you want to go and head south on Nova Road, you could do a U-turn right at that light, right after Publix, I think. That's.
Correct. Or you could also come on, on the back end to North Old Kings Road, go to Granada, and then you could go either westbound or southbound. So there is, there is a reasonable alternative.
So it's Willmet and then that back way.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Can you go back to the site renderings, Stephen? And then back to the picture of what it's supposed to look like. All right. And then help me, where the red car and the blue car are in front of them is Nova Road?
Yes, it would, it would be over here, is Nova Road.
I've got the orientation right.
Old Kings Road is in the back.
Okay. Um, Old Kings in the back, and then Willmet on the, or Stirhouse on the side there. Or no, Chicken Salad Chick on the side, north side. And Mr. Rich Strickson are on the south side.
Correct.
I got you now. And then the northbound Nova, right turn only at Granada, was that in place when this went before the planning board? Or were there, where are the belts?
It was done relatively recently. I'm not sure if it was in place when, when the planning board looked at it.
I just wondered if that alleviated any of their concerns as far as the traffic pattern? I know there were only two that voted against it, but I thought that might help. Those are the only questions I have. Anyone else?
I would just say, what, we're changing, the forest is a zoning change. What would the uses be if there was no zoning change? What type of?
Sure. So the B-8 zoning district is our general commercial. So we allow drive-through restaurants, restaurants. You allow medical office, office, so a variety, personal services. So a variety of commercial uses.
But not a car wash?
Not a car wash. Car washes are only allowed in our B-5 Service Commercial Zoning District. So in order to introduce the use, the requirement is to go through the Plan Business Development process.
Commissioner Kent.
So car wash wasn't a permitted use. Well, what was the thinking of, of the city when it was zoned this way? Why were we saying no car washes? There had to be a good reason.
So originally, car washes were only supposed to be within the B-5 Service Commercial Zoning District. With the Cloud 10 application, there was basically a determination through that process that a car wash was a consistent commercial use. So that's what's being applied to this application by staff. Because that's the direction we received from the commission with the Cloud 10 car wash. Otherwise, it should only be in the B-5. The PBD says that if you can find, you know, determinations that this is a consistent use, which staff can, because there are other uses which are more intense. So from a commercial perspective, this use is, is within a realm of uses. If there's direction to amend the car wash to add it to other zoning districts, staff can certainly do that, but that hasn't been our direction.
But it has to be a Plan Business Development in order to make that happen.
So if there's a direction from the commission to allow car washes in other zoning districts, we would amend the zoning district standards, and it would no longer come to the commission. So my concern is, it may be appropriate in certain locations, but do you want every commercial zoning to allow a car wash?
Right. And planning, planning board, you know, was 7-0 on one piece of it, 5-2 on the other. So there was definite support there with it. I'm just now wrestling myself with, is this the proper location? Commissioner Selby.
Stephen, can you go back to that parking easement for Chicken Salad Chick?
Sure.
Just like to get a better understanding of that.
So it's on the site plan too. So it's, it's in essence, this area right here.
So all of those spaces that are on the north side of the parcel there are part of that easement?
Correct. I believe it's just this row here.
Oh, okay.
And then these would be for the employees. And basically, the thought process is to ensure that that, that center had adequate parking.
Very good. And are there, does, does that site plan show the FPL poles there?
It does, but it's so small that you wouldn't be able to see it. So that's why we put this, this rectangle, this is the FPL easement here. So basically, no, no tall structures can go.
Are there, are there one or two on the site? How many are there?
There's quite a few. I mean, there's, there's, I'd say maybe two, but the, the power lines run through the entire site.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Deputy Mayor, persons.
Yeah, I, I've been wrestling with it, with this one, because I'm not sure that's what, what is the best use of the property, number one. And we do have another car wash right down the road. And I don't see that it's crowded all the time. So that's kind of what I'm wrestling with. Because I drive back and forth from there a lot. So I just wanted to make that point.
So at, at the planning board, and hopefully the applicant will do it again, they did a really good job of explaining the time spent at the facility. And that, you know, it's a, like a minute or two through the car wash, you know, another five, 10 minutes to clean it, and you're gone. So, you know, the, the turnover is very quick, which, which doesn't appear to be, you know, very busy. So hopefully, the applicant and his presentation will go detail that for you.
Anything else? Thank you, Stephen. And I only have one card, which is the applicant, Steve Schlossberg.
Hi, my name is Steve Schlossberg. I'm not a resident of Ormond Beach, but I own many properties here in Ormond Beach. I was born and raised here. Splash Car Wash is a family-owned and operated car wash company. We're, we started in Port Orange. We're a full-service car wash operator down in Port Orange. One of the only remaining full-service car washes in the area, as you probably know. Some of these bigger public companies have come in. They've bought up all of the car washes in the area, and they've turned them into express exterior only. So anybody that wanted to have their car detailed, forget about it. It's, it's over. So we saw an opportunity in Ormond Beach to bring full-service car washing back to Ormond Beach. And that's why we started looking for a site that would be centrally located to Ormond Beach, which we thought this was, that had great ingress and egress, lots of ways in, lots of ways out, because these car washes do get busy at times. And this site really checked all the boxes for us. So we, we started looking at, how could we make this full-service car wash better than anything you've ever seen here in Ormond Beach? And this one will be. We are so excited to show this community what this is going to be. And I just want to point out a few really cool things about this that you've really never seen. So the first thing is, when you come in the property. So when you come in the property, the first thing you do is you come in here to what's called a self-prep area. It allows customers to come in, empty the trash out of their car, scrub any bugs that they may have on their car that they know are a little bit of a problem. Once they leave that area, they come into the main car wash tunnel. They go through that tunnel, just like any other car wash tunnel, except it really does a great job of cleaning and drying the car. When they come out of there, they have a couple of choices. They can leave the property at that point. They can vacuum the car themselves, or they can circle around here and come into another tunnel. And this is called a detail tunnel. They will park their car on this belt, they'll get out of the vehicle, and within 10 minutes, their car will be completely detailed. It's kind of like a little factory in there. There's people at each station, and it's, it's super quick and super efficient. So one of the things that most people hate about full-service car washes is it takes forever, and you don't really know when your car is going to be done. If you remember Sparkle and Shine, you'd sit around going, when? No more. You get in this thing, as soon as you get out of your car, you watch it go down the pathway, you hop in at the end, and you leave the property. You're completely done interior and exterior in less than 15 minutes. So it's a really cool concept. It's the only one like it that's, that's going to be in our area. The only other one that we know of in Florida is down in Melbourne, and it's been highly successful. So to your point, yes, there is another car wash in town, but it will, it will have nothing on this one. Full-service car washing back in Ormond Beach, that's what everybody has told me they want. And that's why we, this is an extremely expensive undertaking for us as the developers to build this facility. to build this facility and to build that extra tunnel to do the interior. Nobody wants to do it, because it's so hard and so labor-intensive. But we believe with this new efficient concept, that it's going to be something that people will welcome, and it'll be a great thing for the community. We've done everything the planning board asked, we've answered all their comments, and we certainly would respectfully ask that you approve it.
Commissioner Kent, thank you. First of all, nice to meet you, and I love that you're a family-owned business.
Thank you.
I don't like it, I love it. Question for you, or even for Stephen. So I'm looking at the building, and, you know, Ormond sets itself apart from some of our sister cities in the county. And I didn't get a good picture of really what the building is going to look like, you know? I see a yellow or gold band around there, but as far as like the name Splash Car Wash, I see it says Car Wash, there's a letter D, I see like this cartoon-looking sponge somewhere there, like, I'm hopeful there's not like cartoon sponges and cartoon drops of water, like, I don't want to see that. I'm warming up to this project.
Okay.
But I need a better visual, Stephen, do we have one of what the exterior of this building is going to look like? Is it going to be cartoonish, or is it going to look like Ormond standards?
So the only rendering we have in the presentation is this, so this project was built in...
And let me just jump in, and like, there's no lettering on there, like, I don't see any of that.
Right.
And this is a little bit of a concern for me.
Right, so the signage would be at the exterior of the things, and again, if you feel it's too much signage, you have every right to reduce the signage. So this project was built in Port Orange, staff has both, you know, visually gone there, we talked to Port Orange, we've gone through the car wash, so we know the operation. So our land development code allows 20% of the building color to be non-passed L color, which is how they do the banding and the blue, but everything else is compliant with the city's architectural standards. And again, this is a planned development, so if there's a particular item that you don't like, whether it be signage, or instead of, you know, false, you know, architectural attributes, the commission can require other items.
Right, and let me just tell you, signage is very important, that's something also in our community people complained about, but you need to know what you're doing, you know? And when I heard we have to have signage so you're not confused, I was like, oh my gosh, you know, like, why do you have to have so much signage so you're not confused on where to go and how to do it? And once you've been there once or twice, people will get the hang of it. But I'm not big on, you know, so much signage to direct you on where to go on a site like this, but at the same time, I can't stand it whenever, you know, we mandate like monument signs, and we mandate that you put planters near it, and then the growth is over the sign, and you're like, this person spent so much money on this sign, I don't even know what business that was, I just drove by, like, come on, you know, cut that back a little bit, or get the plant out of the way so we can see it. So that's something that I think, Commissioner, I'm going to need to talk about a little bit, is I just want to make sure that if I do give my approval on this, that we're all good with the design.
I see what you're saying, there's a detail, and I absolutely miss that. It looks like SpongeBob SquarePants, that's the only thing I can liken it to, and I kind of, that doesn't appeal to me personally, it looks, I'd like to see something a little fun.
We certainly can remove SpongeBob.
Yeah, good.
He's our mascot.
[laughing]
But yes, I understand.
Yeah.
And respect it.
I just think on our main road, I don't know.
Yeah, and the piece to that is that, and I get it, you know, you have your branding, and that's very important, but we all know those golden arches are McDonald's, but I was recently in a community in South Florida, and they didn't have the golden arches, and the place was jammed up, and they knew where McDonald's was, and I said, it's sort of like, you know, we look back, this was before any of us were on the commission, of our Walmart. Well, I've been to some communities where you go to a Walmart, and you're like, holy cow, they can make them like this? This looks amazing, you know? And I certainly want to welcome you to our community and support your business, I want you to be wildly successful, but I just want to make sure that it's at a level that Ormond Beach residents appreciate, and they're used to seeing. I hope you understand.
Hundred percent agree. We have the same philosophy, we, I think if you saw our facility in Port Orange, they're very proud of it down there, and it meets all the things that you want to see in Ormond Beach.
Got you. So what are you thinking, Commissioner, as far as a, not to get too much in the weeds, but...
Yeah.
As far as a, like, what's on his shirt is more appealing, I guess, than SpongeBob? Right, but when I, like, and that's something I saw, you know, and I know it's part of his branding, but, and this is just me, but, you know, the big cartoonish drops of water, you know, are not appealing to me. The SpongeBob, the sponge, is not appealing to me. I'm going to get into the weeds here, but the red-yellow combo is not appealing to me. I'm more of a gray or black lettering on there, that's just me, and I don't want to, like you said, get into the weeds and make the design, because that's not what we do, but at the same time, we have to have a moment to discuss this and talk about this, because once it's there, it's there, you know? And, you know, we had Cloud 10, and now there's Camel. And, you know, I drove by that, and I called Heather, I said, "Did you know?", she said, "I meant to call you yesterday." You know, my son-in-law said, "Well, I have the monthly service there." I says, "Is it still good?", he said, "Yeah, yeah, they're honoring it, all of that's good, just some questions I had about it." But I don't know that I would have approved a sign with the camel running the way it does, you know what I mean? It's just, you know, I've gotten in the weeds before about Ormond, because about certain things, the architectural embellishments and the signs, because, you know, years ago, there was a guy that wanted to put like a 12-foot colored rooster in front of his business. No.
Right.
Not Norman Beach, you know?
Right.
And if that's what's going to make your business fail, then we're going to have, we can have a long, healthy discussion about it, because if your business is going to fail because you can't have a big colorful rooster in front of it, then we've got bigger discussions to have. So Mayor, to answer your question and to get more in detail with it, I think I've shared what I don't, what I'm not crazy about, I'd like to hear what the rest of the commission says. Okay, and then the back, that's off of Old Kings, and that's where you go into the car wash, correct?
Well, there's multiple ways that you could come in, from Kings, Old Kings, or from Nova Road. You can also leave both.
But the back is where you drive your car into the tunnel?
Oh, yes.
Or into the detail area, okay. So on that other slide where it says front, I don't know why you need signage on that, because people aren't going to be entering that direction anyway. You know what I mean?
Well, actually, they enter the car wash from, in other words, well, first of all, I mean, we're a car wash, we need to put car wash on the building and let people know that that's what we are. That's the most primary sign that'll be on the building is the words "car wash".
I don't have a problem with that, but I don't think you need at both ends of the tunnel, direction saying what it is, I think only on the end that you're going into does it need to say what it is, so I can look up and be like, "Oh, this is exterior car wash", I don't want that, I want to go through interior detail.
Well...
What is, am I looking at it as I drive out saying, "Oh, I just came out of the wrong thing"? I don't think that's happening.
No, I think the reason that we thought it was important was because this is a new concept, and people might think it's just another car wash, that you can't get your interior done, and so that interior detail was a critical word to have on that building, so people knew, oh, now I can get my interior done again.
Yeah, I'm not sure I agree with that. I guess whatever we approve tonight, we can, in the interim, come down to Port Orange and look at what you've got there, if that's what this is going to be, and see if there's any ways we can...
Just similar facility, this is obviously a much more elaborate operation.
Commissioner Littleton? Thank you, Mayor. That's, I think, I believe I'm on your website, and I think I'm looking at the Port Orange one on your website here? This?
That is our full-service location.
Is it in Port, that's the one in Port Orange?
It's in Port Orange, the new one is on Nova Road.
Okay. And so it's designed a little bit differently than this. Two questions, why is this one different colors, it looks like, and it doesn't look like you have an interior detail tunnel in this one? Is that just because it's a new concept?
So that car wash was built in 1994.
Looks it.
And it looks it. The new concept that we're talking about is not what's in Port Orange. That full-service car wash in Port Orange is the old style, like Sparkle and Shine, very similar to Sparkle and Shine. This is a whole new concept that nobody in the area has ever seen. And so this building will be more modern, obviously, will have the interior and exterior tunnels, which is something, again, it's a whole new concept, it really is a sophisticated look when you finally see it, when you see the finished look. The one on Nova Road that we have erected is an express exterior, and it just, you know, I would encourage you to take a look at it, just because it's a good-looking facility, and everybody in the community has been very pleased with it.
My other point, I mean, if the words "car wash" are so important, why isn't that on the west-facing side, as far as Nova Road, where you're going to get the majority of your traffic driving by, versus exterior or interior, whatever it is, but I'm just hung up on that. Commissioner Kent? And yeah, thanks, Mayor, and for me, again, it's those colors, the yellow and that red, I would much rather see like a gray banding and black lettering, that's just me, Commissioner.
It's just that they're primary colors, they look elementary, I mean, that's kind of what screams out to me. Yeah, I would love to see the colors changed, and maybe just a different, I don't know, whatever your mascot is, you know, maybe a different mascot.
I think you're trying to say, maybe, Commissioner, we expect a classier look in Ormond Beach, not cartoonish, not gaudy, bright, loud colors, but something more professional and classy. Mayor, if I can, and I love, I'm going to repeat myself a little bit, which is not the greatest thing to do, I love the family business idea, and I love the full-service idea. I love that in 15 minutes, because you were spot on about, you know, I'm not going to mention the name of the business, but you didn't know when it was going to be done. I love that you're going to go through a tunnel, and within 15 minutes, you know you're going to be done, and, you know, it's like an assembly line, like the Model T Ford was created upon, you know? I love that, and that you're, that's offered to our residents, but Mayor, you said everything that I've been trying to spit out, but I just didn't want to go there, but thank you for going there. No problem. Stephen, how do we get there?
There really are two options, I believe, one is to continue the item and have the elevations come back to the commission on first reading, or the second option is to approve it on first reading contingent on getting elevation, so whichever option the commission is more comfortable with.
If we do that, then there has to be a second reading anyway?
Correct.
So if we approve it tonight, it changes at the second, then there'd have to be a third reading?
No, you could amend it at second reading. And I'm assuming the applicant is amenable to providing some revised elevations? He's shaking his head, yes. So as soon as they can get us some revised elevation, we should be able to put it in the next agenda, commission agenda, and again, if either we don't get it, or you don't find it acceptable, you can table the item until such time you find something that is acceptable.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Selby? I'm just looking at the signs requested, is there a typo on this? I mean, on the elevation column? Because it shows four of them on Nova Road, aren't two of them on Old Kings?
Correct, it just, yes, there is. So two are on north, these are on Nova, and then these on Old Kings Road.
Go back, which ones are on Nova?
This one right here.
And they're on the front, and they're on the entrance and the exit?
Correct.
Is that what the mayor was saying?
Yes.
So they're on both ends of that?
But the spreadsheet...
Yes, you are correct.
...the detail shows that they're all on Nova Road, all four of those ones, actually, two are on Nova and two are on Old Kings, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm not, I'm just focusing in on the amount of square feet of signage. They're requesting 151 square feet, and what, and they're requesting, what, five signs?
Correct.
And two are allowed in 76 square feet, which doesn't seem like much for being on two streets, but that's what our code says, huh?
That's why we have a planned business development.
Okay, okay. So I was just thinking, and Steve, you know, maybe, you, would you, do you think you might be amenable to making the Old Kings elevation signs just a little bit smaller? You know, to get your total square footage down a little bit?
Sure, yeah, I mean, the idea is, again, just to, you know, just like any business, we want people to know what we're doing there. And it's a new concept, so that's what we were trying to accomplish.
Well, I was just thinking that the Nova Road ones, you want pretty good size, because people driving by at a faster speed, and you want to communicate what you do, but on the Old Kings side, on your east side, I mean, people are going relatively slow, that's a one-block, I mean, two-block long street, there's a stop sign, you know, at Sturteaus there, so, and those are primarily directional signs.
That's correct.
Primarily to let people know which tunnel to drive into.
That's correct.
Okay.
We can easily make some adjustments.
So that would save some square footage there.
Yeah, definitely can make adjustments.
I do kind of agree with the mayor relative to, you're not asking for a sign that says "car wash" on your west elevation, on your Nova Road frontage, only on your north elevation.
Well, it actually does say exterior car wash, but yes, it's not the prominent, we could certainly change that.
Okay, so I get it, okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
But we're certainly willing to change the signage around, work on the building colors, and bring it back to you for the second reading, I would...
Are your colors, are these your corporate colors?
They are.
How many locations do you have?
We have two in Port Orange.
Okay, and what if Sparkle and Shine, which is now Mr. Car Wash?
Mr. Car Wash.
What if they decide to do something that wouldn't kill their business and go back to full service? I mean, it appears to me that the place is just dead.
It, we scratch our head every day.
Must be a big, big, big company, that someday, somebody's going to look at the spreadsheet and say, "Oh, my gosh, we're not doing any business there in Ormond Beach, what's going on?".
Yeah, we tried to buy that actually from them before they did what they did, and they chose to close it down and turn it into an exterior only. But that was a public company.
That wouldn't impact your, if they woke up one day and said, "We need to go back to what was very successful", wouldn't it impact your plans?
No, sir.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
So this is zoning, yes, Commissioner?
I'm prepared to make a motion for this first reading, 9E. I move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second, with stipulations that he's going to change the exterior.
I think that's understood, yep. So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Yeah, Mayor, just that my approval tonight is based upon, at second reading, we see some pretty significant changes to how this, how this looks with the color scheme and the sign of the signage, and I'm hopeful that they'll sit down with staff, staff can help them a little bit with Ormond Beach expectations. All right, and I had a card from Kelsey Horton, did you, just in case, okay, technical questions. All right, any other discussion? Please call the booth.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, 9E.
Ordinance number 2022-21, and ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a planned business development to be located at 55 North Nova Road, to be known as the Splash Car Wash, authorizing the redevelopment of the property for a full-service car wash, authorizing alternative wall signage consisting of five signs totaling 151.34 square feet, establishing conditions and expirations of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2022-21 read by title only.
Thank you, Susan, any further questions for Stephen?
I move for approval.
Well, let me, oh, sorry, I just, because I have a couple cards, I guess, Mr. Schlossberg again, are you okay? And then Paul Holm, if he wants to add anything. And then Paul Holob, if he wants to add anything.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, my name is Paul Holob. I reside at six seventy-five North B Street. I just wanted to remind the commission, when we bought this church, it was a full-fledged homeless center. And one of the reasons we bought it was because of the interaction with our retail center next door. It caused a lot of disruption to the chicken salad chick business and others. And that was one of the purposes of buying it. But more importantly, this car wash only generates about, I think, four hundred to five hundred trips a day. And I gotta be honest with you, the other inquiries we've had was for fast food with drive-through because it's permitted, which is five times the traffic. Certainly, I concur with you on the colors and the signage. And maybe they can sit down and look at our building next door and come up with similar in design. But the car wash itself, I went to the one in Melbourne before I went to contract with Mr. Schlossberg or right afterwards. It is a impressive facility. As you know, we don't have a, really, a full-service car wash in town now with Sparkle and Shine closing. And you don't normally get a two-and-a-half acre site. And if you look at the site plan with the stormwater retention areas and the landscaping and preserving the historic tree and so on, you know, the car wash, Sparkle, I mean, which is now Camel or whatever that they sold, that's on one point three acres. We would have loved to have kept a portion of this property and not sold the whole two-and-a-half acres, but it wasn't large enough to split. So what you're getting is a lot of landscape and a lot of area buffers that you might not normally get with a smaller, compact site. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. I'll make the same disclosures with Mr. Holob as I did before for nine D and E. And then anyone else have anything?
Commissioner Kent? Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, this is talking about the signage. So there's five signs. I wanted to pick your brain a little bit about those signs on the exit when you come out, you know, to kind of remove some of that. What are your thoughts? Where are you with that?
Well, I'd be curious to see what they present after, maybe they work with Paul, who knows how to make a project look good. As far as colors and placement and size, I mean, there's professionals that are experts on this. And I understand it needs to say "car wash." I don't understand on the Nova Road side why it needs to say exterior or interior, because you're not driving in that way, so you don't need those.
That's what I'm asking about.
Yeah.
Those two, so if those two were removed, would it be three, is that right? From five, three?
Well, I think, I mean, I don't wanna speak for the applicant, but I think those are really, really important to tell the driving public what they do. I think they wanna, they want people to know that you can get the outside of your car cleaned and the inside of your car cleaned. You know what I mean? So those are informational. I think those, I think you're more likely to see them reduce the size of the signs on the east side of the building on Old Kings, because there's not a lot of traffic on Old Kings, number one, and those are really just directional, just to get people in the right tunnel.
Commissioner Selby, I can understand that now that you're saying that.
They're not, I mean, those ones on Nova, that face Nova Road aren't directional. It's not to tell the driver where to go. It's to tell the driving public, the people passing by, what they do.
What it is. I mean, I'm not a hundred percent sure that's the most understandable way to do that. But I think really the color and the cartoon character are the more of concern.
And Stephen, we didn't talk about like a monument sign out on Nova Road. Can you, can you share a little bit about that?
Yes, the project is proposing a monument sign.
Right, of course. That says what?
I can't recall.
I got a great guess for you, "car wash." Okay? So it's going to say "car wash" on it right there. So why do we have to have it written up above that this is what we do at the car wash? We know what you do at a car wash, you clean the cars. And once word gets out, people are gonna realize this is the only trick in town where you can go and get full-service car wash. So you don't have to have that. I disagree with that thought, that that has to be there. I think it's too much signage. It's, this is before us because it's too much. We don't allow that much. The monument sign says what it is and, you know, jokingly, I tell people I quit gambling and then I say, you wanna bet? But thank you, thank you. You're gonna be wildly successful, in my opinion. I, I'm just so, I'm happy for you. I'm happy for Ormond Beach because they're going to have that full-service car wash. And I agree with Stephen. I'm glad you got up and talked about it and talked about what your process is going to be. I'm hopeful that when you leave here tonight, you're like, these people helped me. They want me to be successful in Ormond Beach. We're not trying to nickel and dime you or hurt your business, but I don't think you have to have that up there that says "full service." I think it takes away from what you're doing. That's why I wanted to talk about the monument sign. And then people will learn what it is. And those that just want the quick run-through will go to Camel. And those that don't will go get the full detail. And I already know where my wife's gonna go, so.
One minor weed, little weed, just while we're talking. Think about maybe changing the font, too. I just think the font could look a little different, make it look more friendly. I don't know.
What was the Camel before it was the Camel?
Cloud Ten.
Cloud Ten. Which was fairly classy, it was okay. And then I agree with you that I've gotten some strange comments about a camel.
And he's running.
Right.
I don't know if you've seen it, but.
Not that they're, you know, the most graceful animals, but.
How they spit, right?
So, okay. I just, I feel comfortable. Commissioner Kent, you bring up a great point as far as the McDonald's you saw in South Florida. As a city, we can make a difference as to how we look by insisting on a higher standard. Mr. Holob's made a career out of that and been successful because he goes above and beyond. Basically, everything I've ever seen from him has been well above and beyond. And he learned that from commissions, I think, in the early nineties. And that's probably served in eighties all over this area. And he cares about where he lives and what he does, so that makes, that makes that difference. But, Mr. Schlossberg?
We will make you proud. That's all I can say. We will come back and make you proud.
Do you have a little brother?
I mean, I understand it, I get it, and I respect it. So I'm, I'm all about doing the right thing and that's what we will do. We will come back with something that makes you proud.
Thank you for that. Do you have a little brother?
A little brother, I do.
Scott?
Scott.
Okay.
You know him?
Why'd he move to Arizona?
Because he had triplets.
That'll do it.
Real quickly, Mayor, Stephen, is this coming back before us? Because I'm inclined to vote no because of the five signs. I don't want five signs. But if this is coming back before us and he's going.
It is coming back for you on August, August third?
I just wanted to make, I knew the other one was. I just wanted to make sure. I had a ninety-nine percent surety this was coming back, but I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner? I think we have a motion and.
I move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Nine F.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending section one dash twenty-two definitions of terms and words of Article Three, definitions and acronyms of chapter one, general administration, amending section two dash thirty-two, I dash one, light industrial zoning district of Article Two, district regulations of chapter two, district and general regulations, amending section two dash fifty-seven, criteria for review of specific conditional and special exception of Article Four, conditional and special exception regulations of chapter two, district and general regulations and amending section three dash twenty-six, off-street parking requirements of Article Three, off-street parking, circulation and loading of chapter three, performance standards by amending definitions to provide definition and conditional criteria for the warehouse, indoor mini rental use and by amending the parking calculations for a warehouse, indoor mini rental and mini warehouses, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-two, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. And Stephen, I'll ask you to speak. I'm hoping you can do it on F, G, H, and I, maybe all at one time. I think they all come with seven oh, planning board recommendations.
So this one's actually the warehouse. I can probably absolutely do the museum ones. So this is a request for a land development code amendment to allow indoor storage. It's a use that we've seen grown popular. Right now, it's not a use allowed anywhere in our land development code. The industrial zoning district, we believe, is the most appropriate. So what we did is we created a definition, created a conditional use standard with conditional use criteria in section two dash five seven. And we also established parking requirements. City staff looked at the B seven and the B eight zoning district because that's where the two existing ones, one constructed, one under construction, have gone. Both zoning districts have issues. One would allow it on South Atlantic Avenue, which we don't believe is appropriate. And the other, the B eight, only allows thirty feet in height. These buildings are typically forty to forty-five feet in height. So you will see indoor storage come through as a planned business development and then you'll decide on a site-by-site location whether it's appropriate. But the I one doesn't have the ability to go through a planned development. I one allows, industrial allows warehouse. So we believe that it's an appropriate location. Planning Board did review it and recommend seven zero. Staff is recommending approval.
Any questions for Stephen?
Stephen, where's the I one generally located?
There is I one located on US one. It is located, the industrial airport business park, and there's a little bit around Andalusia.
Very good.
Any other questions? I don't have any cards on nine F. Just need a motion.
I move approval.
A second motion?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes.
And now, finally, to nine G.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash ninety-two, a resolution authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a special exception to allow live outdoor music under certain conditions associated with the Ormond Memorial Art Museum and Gardens, located at seventy-eight East Granada Boulevard within the B dash four Central Business Zoning District, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash ninety-two, read by title only.
Thank you. And Stephen, if you'll give us the quick background on GH and I.
So at the seventy-eight East Granada Boulevard, the Ormond Memorial Art Museum, there are three separate applications. The first is for outdoor activity through a special exception for live outdoor music. The application includes certain criteria, essentially only during scheduled events. City staff did a neighborhood meeting, sound test, which we found the decimal readings acceptable. We did note that because of the location along Granada, South Halifax and Seaton Trail, the roadway really impacts the decimal readings with or without music. Planning Board recommended approval, seven.
Go back one, just for a minute.
Sure. And the Planning Board recommended approval of seven to zero. There were two correspondence within your packet. One was just before Planning Board expressing concerns from the Ormond Heritage. And then we got one right before the commission also from the Ormond Heritage. When we did the sound test, basically at the corner, you could not hear the music, but you could certainly hear the cars, especially as they're starting and stopping. And then the other two applications, one is for one additional signage and then the last application is for public art, which basically seeks to allow additional butterfly sculptures on the walls. And the Art District Board unanimously recommended approval of that one.
Thank you. And G and H were both unanimously recommended by Planning Board?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Stephen?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
So why only four performers, live performers? I mean, what if they booked the Talking Heads and David Byrne and his group show up? I mean.
They'd be in violation of the development order.
Yeah. I mean, I, no, really, I mean, I said that in tongue-in-cheek, but I've seen some great musical acts and bands and they have more than four performers and they're really good. You know, like that violinist, like, whoa, where did that come from? You know? And it worked perfectly with that music. I'm just, I'm just wondering if we're shooting ourselves in the foot. Like, we've got a noise ordinance, so why are we only saying four live performers?
So in previous.
They have five, they have five, the band has five, that's no-go.
So in previous applications, one of the concerns has been the number of performers because it creates noise. So the application came in at four, staff processed it. So perhaps the applicant would like to.
Hey, if that's what they came in at and that's what they want, that's fine. Just worried about Talking Heads not being able to perform.
Anyone else?
Can I, I would just, yes, the B four, that's the downtown zoning district, right, basically?
Correct.
Thank you, that's all right.
The only card I have is the director of the museum, Stephanie Mason Teague, and she's here, if needed, for any questions. Do you wanna address the band issue just quickly?
Hello, Stephanie Mason Teague. I reside at one seventy Orchard Lane in Ormond Beach and am the director of the Ormond Art Museum. When we approached to have live music, it was for specific events, specifically wedding celebrations and other type of private parties. We are not applying to be a concert venue, although I love the Talking Heads, too. But the space that we have available and the space that we are promoting is definitely for community use for that type of private celebration that we feel is necessary in Ormond Beach and filling a need. But if you have a concert venue in mind, we could talk about that. But we actually increased it to four. Originally, it was considered at three and the same condition came up. What if they have a guitarist, a bass player, a pianist and a singer? That's four. So we were trying to be, you know, aware that we don't wanna limit our performers, but we do wanna be respectful of our community and of the commission. And our intent is to serve our community with private venue rentals.
I hope when you walk away, you realize I was just trying to help you.
Awesome. I love that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Stephanie. And just need a motion.
I'll move a resolution twenty twenty-two dash ninety-two.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Nine H.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash ninety-three, a resolution authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a special exception associated with the Ormond Memorial Art Museum and Gardens, located at seventy-eight East Granada Boulevard within the B dash four Central Business Zoning District within the downtown overlay district to allow one twenty-four-plus-square-foot wall sign in addition to the previously approved five wall signs of two hundred and six-plus square feet for a total of six wall signs of two hundred and thirty-plus square feet, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash ninety-three, read by title only.
The only card I have, again, is from Ms. Mason Teague. Is there a motion?
I move approval of resolution number twenty twenty-two dash ninety-three.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Nine I.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash ninety-four, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, authorizing the execution and the issuance of a public art order, approving the display of a butterfly wall sculpture on the south-facing wall, approving the installation and display of a butterfly wall sculpture on the west-facing wall of the building located at seventy-eight East Granada Boulevard, accepting the donation of public art from the Ormond. accepting the donation of public art from the Ormond Memorial Art Museum, Inc., and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash ninety-four, read by title only.
Thank you. Uh, again, the only card is from Ms. Mason Teague. Any questions for Stephen on this? Otherwise, I need a motion and a second.
I move approval of resolution number twenty-two twenty-two dash ninety-four.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I would only ask the question, these are, if you can donate money to get this purchased, if more donations occur and more butterflies are put up, are they going to have to come before us every time? If there's one put up?
What if one flies away?
Okay. We'll go with it. I'll let it.
It's late.
Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we will, uh, close the public hearings. Thank you, Art Museum, for all you do for our community. Uh, and we'll move to the first reading of ordinances, ten A.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-three, an ordinance amending section two dash three-hundred, method of source selection of Division Three, purchasing of Article Nine, Financial Matters of Chapter Two, Administration of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Ormond Beach by amending the purchasing threshold for small purchases, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-three, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan, and I'll ask our City Manager, Joyce Shanahan, to speak on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this has been this way for a long time, so we're just asking for you to do away with the results.
Any questions of Joyce? If not, I just need a motion and a second. Move for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just that, you know, I agree with you, Joyce. To go from five hundred dollars and looking at what everybody else is, you know, the twenty-five hundred is right out line. Right in line with everybody else. Perfect.
Thank you.
Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Eleven A.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash seventeen, an ordinance approving the final plat for the Tiger Oaks Phase One A subdivision, a planned residential development, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash seventeen, read by title only.
I don't have any cards.
Move approval, ordinance twenty-two twenty-two dash seventeen.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And reports, suggestions, and requests, and we start with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief. Um, first of all, we'd like to thank you for the Budget Workshop today. It was very, um, good, and I think we had a great result. Um, staff is looking to have a shape meeting with you, um, about a thirty-minute meeting. We're, um, finalizing our negotiations with the fire union, and we just want to circle back with you, one last time on some of those issues that are outstanding. Um, we would be suggesting, um, a thirty-minute meeting, um, any of the following days, Monday, August first through Friday, Friday, August fifth. Do any of those work for anybody? I think we have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, August third.
And there's no workshop before that meeting?
Is there a workshop? No. No, there's no workshop.
One and then, August third?
Yeah. Uh, what time do you want to meet? Six.
Six thirty.
Six thirty? Six fifteen.
You said thirty minutes, right?
The meeting starts at seven. It might be better to do six fifteen.
Six fifteen? Okay. Six fifteen on Wednesday, um, the third.
So it's a forty-five-minute meeting. Murphy's Law.
Gives you room to run to the bathroom.
The discussion expands to the time available to carry on the discussion.
I hope not. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley?
Congratulations, Lieutenant Willis. She was one of the, uh, first officers I met, um, here in Ormond Beach, and maybe one of the first employees, and I am just inspired by her ambition and drive to be a great leader in the city. So congratulations on everything you've accomplished.
Thank you. And City Attorney Randy Hayes?
No, sir. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Randy. And we start tonight with Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just, uh, three quick comments. First, um, I, I, the Fourth of July celebration was fantastic. Uh, the turnout was great. The fireworks were amazing. You know, our leisure services folks just do an amazing job, so congratulations there. Well, it's not just leisure services, but because the police, fire, public works, you know, just everybody that's involved. It was just, it was a great event. Next, Dave King, if you're still here. Nope. He's gone. I don't, I don't blame him. But he's, um, it really is, it's, it is pretty cool that he was able to finish his career as chief. You know, that's, uh, that's, that's a pretty cool thing. And I really didn't know Dave very well, but I did get to know him pretty well, um, a few months ago. I don't know if I ever mentioned this to the, to the commission. But, um, we, uh, salvaged some fire hose out of an industrial building that I have, and, uh, we determined that we can use that fire hose in Cuba. And I'm actually going to take it with me a couple of days from now. And I was talking to Chief King about that one day, and he said, "Well, have you pressure-tested it?" And I'm like, uh, no, you know, didn't even know what he was talking about. And, uh, so anyway, he arranged for a, uh, for me to bring all the hose, and there's about three or four hundred feet of it, out to ninety, is it ninety-four? Is that the one out in? Airport Road, yeah. Station ninety-four. We hooked it up to the pumper truck. They put like a hundred, over a hundred pounds of pressure on all the hose, and it was like five different sections, and four of them are perfectly good. One has a minor pinhole leak in it, so, you know, thank you to Chief King to, uh, you know, to, to do that. And now we know this fire, this hose is, is good, and will go to a good use, uh, in Cuba. And then my final comment for tonight is that I, uh, I'm leaving Thursday morning. I'll be in Cuba for four days till Monday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, so five days. It's a reconnaissance trip. I'm taking a mission team down there, a, a construction team in August, and, uh, we're going to convert a forty-foot container into a house for, on a farm that we, um, that the ministry that I work with helped, um, uh, helped to create this farm, and, uh, we're going to create a place for the farmer to live. And, um, so we're going down there to make sure that all the materials and the prior arrangements and everything have been, uh, have been put together, so. With that, so if you need me, uh, between Thursday and Monday, you have a very difficult time reaching me, okay? But other than that, um, thank you, and this, I think this is the longest meeting I've been on since in the six years I've been here. Oh, I think so. I think so, yeah. I must have had much more endurance when I was younger.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Well, it's a really good discussion tonight, and thank you all for everything. Good night.
Good night. Commissioner Kent?
Yeah, Commissioner, um, I got to tell you, in two thousand four, two thousand five, there were a couple, not many, but there were a couple that went right up to one A, one AM. And yeah, that's exactly what I was saying. Um, during the Ed Kelly years, we really streamlined them. We got here before seven forty-five sometimes, you know, and, um, they've, they've not been bad. And we were off for a little over a month, so, you know, we had a lot of work to do here tonight. Um, just, just a couple of things. You know, this past week, it was great. Heather and I received our, uh, certificate of recognition for personally contributing to the Dr. Mary McCloud-Bethune statue. I mention that because the cool piece about this was, the certificate came with a, a piece of statuary marble from the block quarried in the Michelangelo Cave, which was just cool. I thought that was a neat little thing, uh, and a nice little touch thanking the people, um, that participated in that. The fishing tournament, I've got to tell you, I, I didn't bring it up when Wyatt aged out, but I don't know the reasoning why we stop kids from going to a fishing tournament after they're twelve years old. It's one of the activities my son and I love the most to do together, and it's a wholesome, um, refreshing activity. And when Ike talked about the number, you know, so many hot dogs, it just, it just, two parts of this. I wanted to thank Ike Leary because out of his pocket, he buys those hot dogs. He goes down there and he cooks them. And that just, if that doesn't tell you about this guy and what he thinks about family values and learning how to do something cool like fishing, um, I don't know what will. But the second piece to that is Joyce, you know, I'm, my, my time, uh, is, is limited on this commission, and it won't matter for my son, but maybe the city can look at the different, maybe upping the age a little bit. You know, maybe, maybe it's fifteen, maybe it's sixteen. You know, at sixteen, you have to get your own fishing license. You know, up until you're sixteen, you don't have to have a saltwater license. And, uh, it just would have given Wyatt and me and many others out there an opportunity to participate in something a, a little bit longer, and I think it's appropriate. Dave King, I'm, I'm glad he left, but I'm sad he left. Uh, but maybe he'll listen to it later, maybe not. But I had the opportunity on several occasions to have some pretty in-depth conversations with him, and he is a class act. He is a wonderful guy, and I too love that he was able to end his career as the chief. Very well deserved, and I just wish him nothing but the absolute best. Two more. Travis Sargent, Commissioner-elect, Zone Two. Congratulations to you. I'm excited for you, and I'm excited for the city. You solve problems in an out-of-box, out-of-the-box type of way, but you're also blessed with common sense. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm happy for you. And, and last is, the Fourth of July was amazing. It was just, it was just absolutely, the Fourth of July fireworks show. Santori, who we contract with, did an amazing job. It, it was, um, extremely popular. The place was packed. Uh, we, Heather wasn't feeling a hundred percent, so we had to leave a little bit earlier. But I learned something. From my front driveway, we can see the fireworks going off. So that was, that was a cool little thing we learned. But Joyce, um, you know, your, your staff, as always, did an amazing job for our community and our residents. Great Fourth of July celebration. And, uh, and with that, have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Mayor Persis?
Good evening, everyone, and thanks to all of you who are still here. I know it's late. Um, I also wanted to extend my congratulations to Travis Sargent for winning his election. I know it's a big relief, and I know you're excited. I'm looking forward to working with you. I, I agree with the fire, the comments about the fireworks. They were absolutely fantastic, and we heard from so many people in the community how much they liked them. So that just goes without saying. I can just leave it at that. I had, was very fortunate, uh, last week to go to Washington, DC, and be part of the Mary McCloud-Bethune Statuary Committee activities, and thank you. I want to thank this commission for allowing me to go and, and really representing all of you and the mayor. Um, it was, it was really special. Um, the only two mayors there, well, it was Mayor Henry, and then me, I was there just representing, you know, Mayor Partington, um, because he wasn't there. And it was really great having our county represented there. People were very impressed with it. Um, the, the event was something I'll never forget. I got to spend, and I have spent in the past, but I got to spend even more time with Nilda Komos, the sculptress of the statue, and I got the certificate that Mr. Kent was talking about, Commissioner Kent was talking about with the little piece of marble. And it is very meaningful, and it was so meaningful to see, you know, an African-American woman in statuary hall. It just sends, it just chills down my spine that, that, it was so special. So, um, again, I just wanted to thank you all for, for that. And lastly, I just want to say, um, we have three new principals that are coming to Ormond Beach. Um, the first is Heather Inorelli, a local girl that grew up here. She's the new principal of Ormond Beach Middle School. And Tucker Harris, um, another local person. He is the, uh, principal of Sea Rees High School. And a, a young lady, and I don't know her personally, but her name is Michelle. I think it's Soka or Soha. I don't know, Mr. Kent, Commissioner Kent, do you know her at all? But she is, lives on the West Side, and she's coming to Pine Trail Elementary, my alma mater. So, um, at some point, I'm going to ask the commission if it's okay if they come, and we could just welcome them to Ormond Beach. So with that, I'll say good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, Commissioner Littleton?
Thank you, Mayor. The Mary McCloud-Bethune statue, and watching that, that put this county on the map. It's something we can be proud of, and it's going to live in, in the country for, for a long time. I'm very proud to have supported it, and the accomplishments of Ms. Bethune, of Dr. Bethune, are quite something, something we should all strive for. Furthermore, the celebration of Independence Day, the fireworks, I mean, just outstanding. Everyone said it, and social media was rampant with praise. Quite a show that, uh, unfortunately, I won't be a part of anymore, but, uh, it's all, it's been, always been fun for me to go to that celebration and push it, push down the plunger to set off the fireworks, and this year was probably the most special one. I'll say Chief Dave King, when I first did a ride-along with the fire department, he's the one that took me around and that type of thing, and I was always appreciative of him for doing that. He showed me the ropes on what the fire department actually does on a daily basis. Uh, furthermore, I'd like to thank Kevin, who went home smartly a couple hours ago, and Sean for his team. I, of course, had to utilize staff to help with some citizen concerns during the month, last month, and they were right on top of it. Uh, Alex also, city engineer, helped mu- uh, much on that. So Joyce, you're going to have a great staff. You're top-notch. With that, I'll say good night.
Thank you, and great job, commission, covering everything. Uh, the only thing I wanted to point out was congratulations to Travis Sargent, Commissioner-elect for Zone Two. Uh, you'll definitely be serving with Susan. You'll probably be serving with me, so you can pinch yourself now. It's just awesome that you have won election, uh, but you're still meeting with residents, still out there campaigning, like you still have a campaign to run. And I think that says a lot about the type of commissioner that you're going to be, so congratulations to you for that. And with that, we are adjourned.